Okay, good morning. Happy holidays. We have some holiday declarations. So, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, December 9th. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Horsley. Supervisor Solcom. Supervisor Tissier. President Pine.
Here. Thank you. So, this is the portion of the meeting where we take public comment, where anyone is free to come to the podium and speak for up to two minutes on items that are not on the agenda or on the consent agenda or listed on the county manager's report or the board members' report. So, since these are not agendized, we can't engage in a dialogue on the issues, but we can hear your comments. So, we have a couple of cards. We have a number concerning IHSS. Let me hold those for one moment. And maybe Marty Fox, perhaps you could speak now to... I know you want to speak on item number three as well, which is one of our awards. So, if you want to go ahead and make your comments now, that'd be great.
Thank you very much, President Pine. Good morning, members of the Board, my fellow veteran supervisor Solcom and Mr. Malpigh and County Council Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Please vote to implement Laura's Law now. Last year, you were reminded that John Jacob Berger stabbed his mother in San Mateo on August 12th and Daniel Berkman molested three children in San Carlos on October 3rd and then went on to assault a county nurse and security guard at the San Mateo Medical Center on October 13th during the same public comment period on December 10th. The bloody clothes of a 42-year-old San Carlos man living with serious mental illness who was beaten by police were displayed on this very podium. Six other counties voted to implement Laura's Law this past year, but Errol Chang died in Pacifica on March 18th before Orange County did, and Yanira Serrano died in Half Moon Bay on June 3rd before Yolo County, Los Angeles County, Placer County, Mendocino County, and even the city and county of San Francisco did. Those tragedies did not just enrage the coastside parents of adult children living with mental illness and developmental disabilities to the point of refusing to call upon law enforcement for mental health crisis support. It motivated one of our county's senior elected law enforcement officials to point out that four of the last seven fatal law enforcement officer shootings involved persons with a serious mental illness and to publicly conclude that the county's mental health system was broken. You discussed the complaints of violence made by the county's nurses who work at the medical center's psychiatric emergency room and inpatient psychiatric ward during your September 30th meeting. The intellectually and morally reprehensible health systems, policies, and procedures that deny treatment to those persons living with serious mental illness who cannot advocate for themselves will continue to produce even more tragedies next year unless you vote to implement Laura's Law now.
And you have some comments on item three?
Yes. Thank you very much, President Pine, again. The proclamation commends Kaminar for taking people from serious mental illness from crisis to independence. Kaminar and its chief executive officers should also be commended for advocating for the passage of the Helping Families in Mental Health Crisis Act in an opinion piece that was published in San Mateo Daily Journal's January 4th edition. It takes professional courage to criticize wasteful spending on ineffective treatment programs when all one needs to do is look at the $1.2 million that will be spent with the family service agencies of San Francisco's prep and bean programs under the consent agenda, item number 37, as an example of wasteful spending on politically correct disasters. Kaminar's chief executive and I agree, families and physicians need greater ability to get help for persons living with serious mental illness, and assisted outpatient treatment laws like Kendra's Law in New York and Laura's Law in California are effective ways of doing just that. Kaminar's chief executive and I also agree that tax dollars funding consumer rights attorneys who encourage treatment resistance and noncompliance is one of the most destructive forces in the mental health system, and they should not be supported by tax dollars. Congratulations, Kaminar. I hope you have another 50 years, and I invite you to join those of us advocating to empower family members of persons who are so mentally ill they cannot advocate for themselves by giving them access to efficient and effective treatment for their loved ones like they can obtain through Laura's Law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fox. Just for the benefit of the audience, Mr. Fox comes to each of our meetings and speaks to these issues, which we are very informed about. We have another speaker before we get to IHSS speakers. I believe Joe Stratton has some comments on Surf Air.
Yes. Hello, my name's Joe Stratton. My family recently moved to San Mateo County. I understand we live in the North Fair Oaks neighborhood, and I operate a energy consulting business out of my home office. I also have come to realize that we are in the flight path of a noisy Southern California startup airline called Surf Air that flies many times a day in and out of San Carlos Airport. And for whatever reason, Surf Air has chosen a noisy plane in this class. We're talking about a six-seater for people. It's a members-only airline, people that can afford to commute by air. And more significantly, they've chosen a flight path which has them flying at a lower altitude for a longer period of time as they go in and out of the airport. They've got these distinctive blue planes, and it's like being buzzed by a helicopter about 15 times a day. The only thing that would make it more obnoxious is if they had a little Dodgers logo on the bottom of their plane, but hasn't come to that yet. And there is a residence group that's been trying to address this for over a year with no response from either the air, Surf Air, or the airport. And I think this is where we'll be needing the help of our elected officials. I'm sure the working group will probably make a more formal request. There's plenty of data out there which demonstrates the adverse effect of this kind of airplane noise on learning, on health, on real estate values, and this recalcitrant airline is imposing a significant burden on county residents and we look forward to your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I know some of my colleagues are engaged in that dialogue on Surf Air. All right, we have a couple of speakers who would like to address IHSS matters. We could start with Pastor Floyd Prude.
Good morning, President Fine, Pine. I'd like to offer a prayer on behalf of the home care workers. Heavenly Father, we come into your presence humble but rejoicing that you are our God, Lord, and Savior. We beseech you to intervene on behalf of home care workers. They have to suffer because of lost wages and lost income in many cases to support their own lifestyles. We ask you to touch the hearts and minds and spirits of those who have the power of decision-making on the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Have the Board of Supervisors really hear and know the pleas of the home care workers as they seek fair pay and decent treatment. Some of your people seem to feel that they have been denied justice in seeking livable wages for duties that are performed as they assist the poor, needy, and elderly in San Mateo County. May God bless Pastor Floyd J. Purdy, Faith Missionary Baptist Church, 835 Runnymede Street in East Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie, is it Laurie Salo, if I'm pronouncing that right? The Women's League of Peace and Freedom? Lois, excuse me.
Good morning. I have a little poem which you all know to read, and if you would like to give that out to the board members. Respected board people, I'm Lois Salo. I taught in Ravenswood as a kindergarten teacher for many years. I'm a member of the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, and we do Raging Granny's as a project. And I would like to read this well-known poem to you. 'Twas the nightmare before Christmas, and all through the chambers, the board was not worried about home care members. The votes were done, no joy, no care, because no living wage soon would be there. Nana was all snug in her bed, sleeping soundly, she had nothing to dread. In the morning, a home care provider would greet her with a smile, make her some breakfast and stay for a while. But one morning, Nana made such a chatter, no home care provider to see what was the matter. Board members voted living wage away in a flash, home cares providers and the board now in a clash, with the board sitting on a surplus of hundreds of millions while home care providers living in poverty were treated as second-class civilians. What to wit our wondering eyes did appear, but labor who fought for home care, with hopes of not living in poverty slipping from their grip, we knew a living wage must come quick. Now each board member remembered by name, the community chanted with shame. Now sick, now elderly, now disabled, second-class citizens, you shall all be labeled. To the top, the most vulnerable in our community must crawl, while everyone is cheering for a living wage, living wage for all.
We can read the rest of this.
I can read the next part. Okay. Workers continue their fight for 15, as their need for home care soon would be seen. So, when brought up again, each board member knew that home care providers are workers too. And then with a twinkling of hope, the community would become joyous with each and every vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please vote for living wage for home care members.
Tony York? Tanya York? Tanya, is Tanya here? She's outside? Oh, excuse me.
Good morning. We have been at every meeting pleading our case for a living wage in San Mateo County. During this holiday season, you can uplift the lives of home care providers by giving them the gift of a living wage. Over the past few months, you've made it clear that you don't see this program as a valuable resource to members of this community. You continue to treat home care workers as second-class citizens, even as the supervisors in surrounding counties have answered the call and provided home care workers with wages that reflect the high cost of living in the Bay Area. Just this year, Santa Clara County raised home care providers' wages to $13 an hour. San Francisco home care providers will make $15 an hour in 2016, and Marin County home care providers will also see their rages wise. These counties have invested in the thousands of home care providers who bring comfort and care to their clients. It's time you show the same leadership and enlighten your county executive, Mr. John Malpigh, that San Mateo County has an obligation and duty to help working families towards self-sufficiency. This is a season for joy, giving, and having faith in humanity. Today, you can bring joy by improving the lives of over 5,000 workers and showing compassion for this group of compassionate people. Home care providers are compelled to help those in need, yet they are in need themselves. They cannot afford to live in San Mateo County and struggle to survive. You can change that. You can vote to transform their lives. You can be the leaders these providers need. You can show these workers that their work is worthwhile. You can raise them out of poverty. We will continue to fight, not just for home care providers, but for security officers, fast food workers, and all low-wage workers across this county. Don't find yourselves on the wrong side of history. Take a stand and vote for a living wage today. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Kessler? I think that's the last IHS speaker card.
Good morning, supervisors. You know me, Shelley Kessler, San Mateo Labor Council, representing 110 unions and over 65,000 members, more than even voted this last November. So, I'm here because across the nation, people are standing up for justice. They're fighting in the streets. You all see the news. You see what's going on, Walmart workers, fast food workers, people against police brutality. But here, people are in this room and a part of this community, standing up for what they believe and what I believe is a just cause. I'm getting arrested today, not because I want to, but because I need you to all understand this is not just my job. This is something that I sincerely believe in. All of you, every single one of you, have had a situation in your own lives where you've had to deal with the passing of a parent. You've had to take care of someone who's been sick or had surgery. You have someone who's disabled in your family. You all know it from personal experience, every one of you. And yet, when you settle a contract for county workers at an amount far beyond what is being offered here, when you're told that a 10% raise is the highest in the state, when you know damn well that 10% of nothing is nothing, that the fact is that $12 and change is not enough to survive on in this county, and that people are taking two and three jobs in order to make ends meet, because you can't find the will to direct your county manager and the budget office of this county to use the resources you actually do have available to you. We worked hard in the labor community along with a lot of other people to pass Measure A. That's over $60 million for 10 years. The fact is, you have the resources. You can find this money. You could do the right thing for these people. We have a lot of folks here who have provided excellent and good work, not just for their family members, but for community people who need to have full-time care, who have vulnerabilities beyond whatever somebody can do on their own to take care of themselves. We're asking you to stand up, get the will. You can do it. You know you have the resources. Of course, there's the fight for 15. That's not even enough to survive in this county for a single person. So, I'm saying to you, please, look within your hearts and your souls and your own personal experience of the things that you have done. I'm not getting arrested because I want to be. I'm getting arrested because this issue is so important that I'm waking up at nights trying to think of what I could say to all of you, so that you can get the will and grow the need to see that this has to happen here in the county. So, I ask you, please, to do that, to stand up, take responsibility, and give these people the right to have decency and dignity in their lives. Thank you very much.
Okay, we need to proceed with our meeting. We need everyone to quiet down, because you're disrupting the meeting. We have a lot of business today. Will you please calm down? I think we will need to adjourn the meeting until such time as we can have a forum for conducting business, so we will adjourn at this time. Mind, we're set when you are. Okay, we're reconvening our board meeting after the disruption that just took place. Just a quick note on that. I mean, I wish we didn't have to ask for the sheriff's assistance, but you know, there are rules we have to follow to conduct our business in a civil manner, and we very well appreciate the passion and the commitment displayed by SEIU and IHSS, and we're hopeful we'll be able to reach a satisfactory resolution. So, now we'll go back, and our next item is our action to set the agenda. Anyone like anything removed? Or I have just one comment I'd like to make, which is, maybe in the future, the item concerning the private defender could be agendized briefly, just for a little more background on that item. Doesn't need to be done today. Prove the consent agenda items. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Yes.
Motion carries. We now have three presentations. The first, Supervisor Solcom honoring our esteemed controller, Ms. Adler.
Is Mr. Adler here? I don't see Mr. Adler. Is he here?
We could move him. Why don't we move him, then? It's the Historical Association here? Okay, Mr. Supervisor Horsley.
Thank you very much, President Pine. Jim Clendenon from the, as the president, the Menlo Park Historical Association is here to accept this proclamation. So, first, I'd like to move to approve the proclamation honoring the Menlo Park Historical Association.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You know, just, I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but one of the things about the proclamation is that the Historical Association also has a sister-city agreement with the city of Galway, Ireland. And actually, I'm reminded, know a little bit about the history of Menlo Park. Menlo Park was actually a village, it was Menlo, named after a city in Ireland, and it was a group of, it was actually founded by a group of Irish immigrants who were essentially tradespeople who served, I think it's either probably one of the estates or Stanford University, and it's blossomed into one of our great cities in San Mateo County. So, I'm going to give the proclamation for Jim.
So, my name's Jim Clendenon. I'm the current president of the Menlo Park Historical Association, and on behalf of the association, I want to thank you for this resolution. The association has a board of about 12 enthusiastic volunteers and a membership of about 200. We have an office and archives room in the basement of the Menlo Park Library. So, although Menlo Park was only incorporated in 1927, it, and it had at that time a population of 2,001, one square mile of land. It dates back to the 1863 when the San Francisco and San Jose Railroad established a depot at the southern end of the county near the San Francisco Quito Creek and named it after a ranch that was nearby called Menlo Park. That ranch was the one founded by the Irish immigrants from the town of, actually, they were from Galway, but they vacationed in the nearby village of Menlo, which is near Galway. But before that, before the Americans came, the area under the Mexicans and earlier the Spanish was uninhabited ranchland, although in 1769, Gaspar de Petola is said to have camped for several days near that eventual site of the depot while his lieutenant explored the East Bay. This Petola, when he came and discovered, the first European to see the San Francisco Bay. After World War II, Menlo Park grew rapidly, as did most of the peninsula, and by the end of the 70s was pretty much its present configuration of about 30,000 inhabitants and 10 square miles of land that includes a downtown retail area and several industrial park areas. The association is dedicated to preserving, researching, and propagating the entire 445 years of this history, and we certainly appreciate your recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We certainly have terrific historical organizations in the county, and Menlo Park does a great job with that. We'll now return to our Mr. Solcom and a resolution for Mr. Adler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I move into Mr. Adler's resolution here, I just wanted to quickly congratulate Dennis Pantano on being reappointed to the Assessment Appeals Board, and Dennis is over here in the front row, and he is a tremendous asset to the Assessment Appeals Board, and I'm really pleased to see that we've voted to reappoint him. Thank you, Dennis, for your service. So, is Mr. Adler arrived? Mr. Adler has arrived. Okay. So, first, let me make a motion to adopt the resolution honoring Mr. Adler upon his retirement.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. That carries.
So, you may not know that Bob was actually born in Savannah, Georgia, and has a degree from Berkeley and a master of science degree in accounting from Golden Gate University. And of course, he obtained his CPA in 1984, and when he was a manager with the accounting firm of Ernst &amp; Winnie, I think that's how you pronounce that, came to the controller's office in 1995 and served as the assistant controller for some 12 years before becoming the controller. Bob was instrumental in creating the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which Mr. Huning always remind us won many national awards, and we congratulate you on implementing that report. And he's obviously done a lot in automation and done a great deal to help bring, I think, the controller's office into the 21st century. And all your years of service, Bob, are sincerely appreciated and recognized and valued. And we know we're in good hands with Mr. Regosa, but you will be missed by all of us. I wanted to share with the board one of the most unique things that I've discovered about Mr. Adler, which is, and he has a dog named Hudson. And Hudson actually likes to skate, roller skate, sort of, on the hardwood floors of his house. Now, I'm not sure how that works or how that started, but I understand Hudson likes to roller skate on the hardwood floors. Is that right? That's true. Okay. On his claws. Well, you can tell us about that in just a moment. And I think Bob's wife, Jane, is here.
Yes, she is.
Do you want to, Jane, do you want to stand up for just a moment? Aye, Jane. There she is, in the back row. And let me just say that I happen to personally know that Bob Adler is an avid photographer, actually quite an accomplished photographer. And if you've never had the opportunity to see some of his photographs, I encourage you to go to his website and take a look, because there are some really, really beautiful landscapes. And of course, Bob reminded me this morning that they're all for sale.
He's money as he was a retirement.
He didn't really do that. He didn't really do that. But in any event, I would invite the entire board to come up, and we'll present this resolution and maybe take a picture or two and congratulate Bob and Jane. Jane, also publicly, I want to thank you for the Thanksgiving recipe that you shared with me. I appreciate it. It was a big hit. And with that, let us join Bob.
Mr. President, can I just say, can I just jump in? I kind of can't resist, and just, I wanted to just say on behalf of my office how much we've enjoyed working with Bob over the years. We've worked with him for many years, and he's been a fantastic client, super creative, bright, really ethical, and, you know, many lawyers in my office are going to miss Bob. I'm not sure how much he's going to miss working with lawyers, but anyway, he's been a great client, so we'll miss you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Supervisor Solcom and honorable members of the board, President.
Thank you, Supervisor Slocum and Honorable Members of the Board, President of the Board, Pine. It's been a long journey and interesting one. I'm just delighted to be here and I'm delighted to be leaving. Looking forward to many more years of time with my family, especially the pillar of, of my family, my wife Jane, of, wife of 25 years plus seven months and nine days, I can't understand. You can't take the accountant out of me, sorry. It's, the information about Hudson I was telling Warren is probably HIPAA information. I'm not sure he would appreciate that, that getting out. But I know that some of my staff are here. These are the folks who really get the work done every day and who drive our office. So I'd like to share my appreciation with you guys, Controller-elect Juan Rigosa, Deputy Controller Shirley Terrell. I think we've got some folks from payroll, Kristi Paslakwa and her team are here. I think Malé is here and who else is? Well, there are a lot of, a lot of them here, Gina DeGuacca. So these guys really run the office, so I'm going to miss them terribly. They're, they're great friends, they're family. I do want to tell you one story, and that was my first week here. I was hired as an audit manager to take over the audit division. And I was given two days of training and introduction to the department heads. And on my third day, I was handed a completed report. And apparently, the, the way that it was done back in those days was you would meet with a department head. And this department head had already been set up in the meetings. The meeting had already been set up before I came, and it happened to be Sheriff Horsley. And I did not know Sheriff Horsley, but I knew he was the sheriff and I knew he had a lot of ammo behind him. And I waited outside his office.
Still do.
Yes, you still do. I waited outside his office and then I was told that it was okay for me to go in. And he had a very large leather chair that when I sat down in it, I sunk to a very small person's stuff. You know, right away, I was somewhat intimidated and felt very small. And then I looked to my right and there was a lamp made out of an old Tommy gun. And I looked through the report and Don asked me what I had found in the report and I said, absolutely nothing. It's a very well, very well-run shop. Thank you very much. So that, that was actually my very first memory at the county, but, and I'm glad I got to meet you then because I've enjoyed knowing you over the years. And I thank you, Board, for your support. It's been terrific. And I, I, I do think you're in excellent hands with Controller-elect Rigosa and his team, his existence and already. And I thank you for the proclamation. It's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Okay, we will miss you, Bob, and we're very grateful for your long and fine service to our, to our county.
It has been a real pleasure working with you over the years, so congratulations and good luck in retirement.
We'll proceed to our final presentation or award. And that is Supervisor Horsley, Camenar for Mental Health.
Thank you, President Pine. I will again ask for a motion to approve a resolution honoring and commending Camenar for mental health on its 50th anniversary.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? That carries.
Chip Puggins is the CEO of the organization is here to take the proclamation. I just want to say a few things about Camenar. And I think all of us have visited their facilities and they really do a yeoman's job for people who are mentally ill. You know, one of the things that happened in, I guess, the early 60s, 50s when state mental hospitals were closed, there was supposed to be community mental health. And organizations like Camenar have sprung up to actually provide those kinds of services in the community. So it started in 1964, 50 years ago, with a grand total of about 41 clients. Probably was really started by the advocates for people who were mentally ill. And now the program actually serves over 1,000 clients each year through a wide, really a wide spectrum of programs, including crisis and transitional residential housing, case management, medication clinics with integrated holistic health, and of course, supportive housing, education, employment. They do a fabulous job. And I really salute not only Camenar but all of the, and your clients, but also your staff. You do a yeoman's job. It's a population that a lot of times is really forgotten, but you're there. You're in the trenches and you do a fabulous and excellent job, day in, day out, for our county and for the citizens in this county. So Chip, I'd like you to come up, accept this resolution on behalf of Camenar's 50th anniversary.
Thank you, Supervisor, excuse me. Of course, we, hear your remarks, Mr. Puggins.
President Pine, fellow Board members, Mr. Mulby. Camenar has had a great partnership with the county for 50 years. You know, without that relationship and your support, we could not have done the very important work that we do day in and day out. I'd like to recognize Michael Shockett, who has been with Camenar for over 33 years, running our Jobs Plus program. And you might not know this, but we house about 550 clients in the county from Daly City to, to down on the border in the south. 69% of our clients in the Jobs Plus program that Michael runs retain their job for over two years. So this is someone that, these are people that really have acute mental illness. So it's a fabulous job on his team and, and the crew that I get to work with, day in and out. I'm so honored. I'm actually recognizing, I am, I am honored to be the CEO of Camenar. And this is my sixth year, and it's a great honor for me to be here and lead the organization that, that we have created over the years. So with that, thank you very much. Appreciate your support and this recommendation.
President Pine and Honorable Board of Supervisors and Mr. Mulby. We really appreciate the recognition of Camenar's 50th anniversary. Camenar is a unique organization in that it helps the whole person. It's not give somebody an hour on the couch, give them medicine and bring them back in a month. Chip mentioned the housing, the Jobs Plus, the counseling, the structure that people have in their life, maybe for the first time ever. And just the jobs, the, the life skills and job skills, doing laundry, cooking, cleaning. There's a whole gamut of things that Camenar does. And I can tell you personally, two Board members have siblings that would not be here today if it wasn't for Camenar. And Camenar would not exist if it wasn't for your support. So we thank you for your continued support and the recognition. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Thank you. Just to reiterate, really appreciate your being the President of the Board of Camenar as well as Honor AAB, the Assessment Appeals Board. I know that's a very difficult assignment, so thanks for your service to the county.
Thank you, Supervisor Horsley, and a big thank you to, to Camenar. We are very grateful for your, for your good work. We'll now proceed to Item 4, which is the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District and the annexation of the lands of cocoa, not to be confused with the lands of sugarplums, cocoa.
Thank you, President Pine. Members of the Board, Mr. Mulby and Mr. Byers. Staff is, before you recommending annexation of the lands of the cocoa into the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District. We've received approvals from the city of Redwood City to allow the annexation. And the property owner has or will pay all the fees associated with the annexation prior to that document being recorded. So we are recommending that approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Unless there are questions, we are required to open a public hearing. Seeing no questions in the Board, we'll open that public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak to the matter? I do not have any speaker cards.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye.
I'll move to adopt the resolutions.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to adopt the, the resolutions concerning the lands of cocoa and their annexation. All in favor? Aye. That matter, that carries unanimously. Item 5 is the Williamson Act and the notices of non-renewals and certain, certain appeals. Steve Monowitz will lead this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pine, Members of the Board, Mr. Mulby, Mr. Byers. As you are aware, the San Mateo County Williamson Act program is a voluntary program under which property owners who devote their land to agricultural use receive a tax benefit. In 2007, the county's program was audited by the Department of Conservation, which resulted in a number of actions. One of them being the non-renewal of 128 contracted parcels from the program. This first phase of the non-renewal was focused on parcels that didn't have the correct zoning or land use designation for a contract, on parcels where the property owner didn't submit the information requested by the Planning and Building Department or the Assessor's Office, and for parcels where information submitted by the property owner indicated that little or no agricultural use was taking place on the site. So as provided for by the Williamson Act, 11 landowners filed appeals of these non-renewals, which are the subject of today's hearing. And here's a map that shows the location of the 11 appeals. Planning and Building Department first reached out to the affected property owners to ensure that they were provided with adequate ability to submit up-to-date information regarding any agricultural uses occurring on the site. Once we had this information, we referred the matter to the Agricultural Advisory Committee, who considered the appeals at two meetings and provided further opportunity for the property owners to submit additional information. The result of these meetings were that the Agricultural Advisory Committee recommended that the Board deny seven of the 11 appeals and uphold four of the appeals. Planning and Building staff has reached a slightly different conclusion and recommends that all but two of the appeals be denied. So the remainder of my presentation will focus on the two appeals that the Agricultural Advisory Committee recommends the Board uphold, but that staff recommends be denied. So specifically, I'll address the property's compliance with the criteria and exemptions contained in the county's updated Williamson Act program. Discuss the feedback staff received from the Agricultural Advisory Committee and the Ag Commissioner, and describe the basis for why we believe the two appeals recommended for approval by the Ag Advisory Committee should be denied. So the first parcel at issue is the Gossitt property, which is shown by this slide with the red outline. And the prime soils are shown in the colored areas. The property that's subject to the non-renewal is, as I said, shown in red on the top part of the screen. It's about 26 acres in size and is adjacent to a 15 and a half acre parcel under the same ownership. And that parcel's outlined in yellow. The lower 15 and a half acre parcel, which remains under contract and is not proposed for non-renewal, contains a four and a half acre apple orchard, five acres of row crops, a single-family dwelling, cabin and ag support buildings. The upper 26 acre parcel, which is the subject of the non-renewal, is planted with one-third acre of English holly, as well as with fir and redwood trees that may be harvested in the future. Ag use of this upper site is currently limited to the harvesting and sale of holly sprigs that are sold during the holiday season at farmers' markets. Total sales of ag products from both parcels fall under the $20,000 minimum established by the county rules and procedures. That's 10,000 per parcel. So the Agricultural Advisory Committee, as well as the Ag Commissioner, recommended that the upper parcel be allowed to remain in contract because of its connectivity to the lower parcel, as well as due to concerns that an increase in property taxes would cause the property owner to sell the property and potentially cause, allow for development that would be interfere with agriculture. Staff disagrees with this recommendation due to the lack of sufficient ag activities occurring on the upper parcel and because the Williamson Act contract is not necessary to prevent future development that would be incompatible with agriculture. Our existing development standards require new development to avoid areas of prime soils and require development to be compatible with agriculture. And so we don't feel that maintaining the contract is necessary to avoid development that would be potentially inconsistent with agriculture. As I noted before, the purpose of the county's Williamson Act program is to provide an incentive for agricultural landowners to actually farm their land. And since this upper 26 acre parcel is not really being farmed, staff recommends that the appeal be denied and the contract non-renewed. The second parcel at issue is owned by the Audubon Society and constitutes 180 acres of a larger 1,038 acre holding. And you can see the parcel that's subject to the non-renewal outlined in red in the lower left-hand portion of the larger property holding. So the reason this partial, this parcel was issued a notice of non-renewal was because no information regarding its use was submitted in response to requests by the Planning and Building Department or the Assessor. Through the appeal process, staff learned that grazing does occur on the property, but that the amount of grazing is currently limited to seven heads of cattle and over an area of about 25% of this entire holding. The county rules and procedures establish a 75% minimum grazing area. And although we do not specify a minimum number of cattle, it's estimated that a productive grazing operation on this entire holding would support about 70 heads of cattle. Although the Ag Advisory Committee and Ag Commissioner recommended that the appeal be upheld because of the property as being grazed, staff does not believe that the level of grazing represents a devotion of the land to agriculture as required by both the Williamson Act and the county's rules and procedures. So while we recommend that the appeal be denied and the subject parcel non-renewed, we look forward to working with the property owner to see if a productive grazing operation can be reestablished on the site and so a new Williamson Act contract can be entered into for these properties. So with that, I'll conclude by presenting my recommendation that the Board of Supervisor deny certain appeals to the county-initiated notice of non-renewals, which will resume the effects of the non-renewal until the contract expires. And that you uphold two of the appeals. These are on properties where the additional information submitted by the property owner indicates that there is active and adequate agriculture occurring on the sites to retain those two. And for purposes of the motion, I would refer the Board to the main staff report as opposed to the executive summary because it's in the main staff report where we specify the parcels at issue. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Monowitz. Who wrote this here?
I just want to make sure I understand. If we go with the staff recommendation and deny nine and uphold two appeals, during this period of time between now and 2020, people could come back with a, and be in compliance if they so chose to do so? Is that correct?
That is correct. They could apply to enter into a new contract. We would essentially rescind and replace the contract that's phasing out with a new contract that represents what's currently occurring on the site.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a similar question, Mr. Monowitz, on, I mean, you expressly stated that the Audubon parcel might be able to use, be used more intensively. Does that hold true for the, the Gossitt property as well? Or are there limits to what can, limits to agricultural use in that parcel?
I believe the Gossitt property is constrained by hillsides and forests. However, there may indeed be a possibility that agricultural activities could be expanded on that property to enable it to enter back into a contract. I don't know the specific characteristics of the property to say for certain.
Okay, Supervisor Graham.
Mr. Monowitz, we received a letter from Mr. Gossitt, who says that he did meet the product line sales limit of, of over 20,000 last year and that he is, has, he's not, he's not. he considers himself a working farm. Your numbers are different than his?
Yes, apparently, that is the case. However, I'd note that the recommendation to nonrenew the upper parcel is not primarily based on the income being generated, but just the lack of actual farming occurring on the upper parcel. The income derived from the property is primarily from the lower parcel, and we recommend that that parcel be retained in contract.
I thought the, I thought the sales part was, was one of the rules of the Williamson Act.
That is true. For each parcel that is under contract, we expect that it will derive an agricultural income of at least $10,000 per parcel. However, we have given the Ag Advisory Committee and the Ag Commissioner the ability to recommend exceptions to that minimum income requirement, and I understand that either Mr. Gossett meets the minimum income requirement, or if he doesn't, he'd be eligible for such an exemption. And as I stated previously, it's not really, the income that we're concerned about is the actual farming and whether or not that's occurring on the upper parcel.
Any other questions for Mr. Monowitz? We may, of course, have you come back.
Sure. Be happy to.
So, you know, so at this time, we do have the 11 parcels, and there's two difference of opinion between staff and the Ag Commission. So, we do have speakers on both those parcels, which I'd like to get to, but before I do, there's, there's two speakers who I think want to speak more broadly. Well, one speaker, Carrie Burke, if she is, who just is speaking in support of an item that I think there's agreement on between the Ag Commission and the staff, that is the Cook Ospey parcel, where the, both, both entities have recommended upholding the appeal.
Good morning, President Pine, members of the board. I'm Carrie Burke, on behalf of Cook Ospey property, the Diamond H Ranch. The subject parcel has been recommended by staff and the Ag Advisory Committee for retention of our contract. It's 105 acres, and it's part of a larger contract of 400 acres. It's actively been farmed, ranched, and so, yes, we are, we are in support of retaining the contract and appreciate Melissa Ross's work on this. We had to provide some additional documentation since there was a change in ownership, and so I think that was the glitch in this case, but we appreciate the retention of the contract, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and attending. And let's see, Mr. Robert Marsh had some general comments about four contracts.
Good morning, Supervisor Clayton and the rest of the board members. I'm Bob Marsh, and I'm a member of the Ag Advisory Committee. I'm the chairman right now, and I've been on the committee for several years, and I appreciate the chance to be able to advise the county, but I've been in agriculture all my life, and I've been on the co-site all my life. The committee voted to, to, to keep all the, all the four contracts into, into, into the Williamson Act, and so the county agreed with us on two. I don't like to disagree with, with the, with the Planning Department, because we've worked together with them on this Williamson Act for a long time. The Ag Committee has a subcommittee that worked on it for over four years on revising the Williamson Act contract to get it to where the state would, would accept what we have and where it would be easier for everybody to understand it and work with it. On the ones, on the two that we didn't, on the Gossett one, I have one, I have one thing on, on page 18 of the, of the, of the Williamson Act contract, it says income requirements for crops, and it says the owners seeking Williamson Act contract must demonstrate that in three, the last three of the five years immediately preceding the current, the contract parcel has met the following minimum qualifications. And for crops, it's $10,000 per parcel, minimum. But it also says for multiple parcels under one contract, income requirements will apply to the contracted area and not for each parcel. So, I agree with the county on what they're saying there. I mean, I disagree on the county. Could I have a little more time, but I got the two to talk to?
You could take another 30 seconds or so.
Okay. And so then, on the Gossett one, on the parcel that they're talking about not renewing, they do produce an agricultural commodity of holly, and they do have a barn, an agricultural barn on that property, and, and there is a chance of future, future agriculture on that parcel. We, we would like to see that stay in. On the Boardy one, I have to go real fast, but there's, the, the Board of Supervisor had a letter from the Department of Conservation saying that they would like to see this, the Audubon Society stay in the contract. We would like to see it, because that ranch has been in agriculture, and it's been a good agriculture ranch for a long time. The current owner is 84 years old. He's blind, and he only has a few cows, and during this drought, everybody's had a cutback. We had water problems, and so I understand the Audubon Society does not, does not mind leasing it to somebody for, for a regular operation more than seven cattle. I think, I think personally, maybe they just don't want to try to push Mr. Boardy out of there, being he's been there for 57 years, and he's so old, and he's disabled. And I'm saying disabled, he's blind, but he's, he's a pretty sharp man. I know him a little bit, but, and I know some of his family. But anyhow, our recommendation is to keep both, both, both of those properties in.
Thank you for your, for your comments. And I think Mr. Ron Sturgeon also wants to speak to both properties, Audubon and Gossett.
My name is Ron Sturgeon, and unlike Mr. Marsh, I don't mind disagreeing with the Yes, and I want to give you sections of the guidelines that indicate what Mr. Marsh just said, that when you have a property that has two parcels, you're not supposed to demand $20,000 in income, only $10,000. And that applies to the Gossett property. Mr. Gossett is in compliance with the guidelines as far as income is concerned, if you just read page, the bottom of page 18. Regarding the Gossett, or the Audubon Society property, I strongly disagree with the county's position that that contract should not be renewed. It is, there's a long history in agriculture. Mr. Monowitz was silent as to the recommendation of the Department of Agriculture, which is dated just last month in a letter to the Audubon Society. They agree with the Agricultural Committee's recommendation to this board, and I hope that you will reverse staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, as a procedural matter, I guess I'd suggest to my colleagues that maybe we go ahead and, because I don't think they're controversial, amongst the denied appeals, that we approve all but the, you know, let's hold off on Gossett and Audubon, and go ahead and approve the two, the two recommended appeals. So, we're approving everything except for the two in controversy, and then we can come back and do each of those separately.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the, the ones that have been recommended to be taken out of the Williamson Act.
Right. So, all in favor? Motion made? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's focus now on, on Gossett. We do have a number of speakers specifically on Gossett. We'll begin, begin with Mr. Fred, why don't we begin with Mr. Gossett? That'd probably be a good place to start.
Good morning. This is a new experience for me. I don't speak publicly normally. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my father and myself regarding our proposed Williamson Act revocation, as it were, on our upper parcel. Please forgive my appearance. I've been a caretaker for my dad, who's on hospice. I'm a 24/7 caretaker. I'm the only son. Our two parcels together are basically 47 acres, and we purchased them almost 40 years ago, and we had the understanding that it took maintenance and agriculture and what have you on those parcels to maintain that Williamson Act coverage. We've worked hard on getting to that point. It's taken us a number of years. It was basically a bare piece of property when we got there, and the agriculture that had gone on before it was nursery. We have set up a lot of equipment, a lot of equipment buildings, a lot of equipment maintenance systems, all the maintenance buildings, all of the storage facilities for the equipment that we use for production on the lower parcel are on that aspect, the upper parcel. We also have developed nursery stock on that. We sell small trees and things in pots. We're also planting trees all over the property, as was mentioned. We have planned to plant black walnut trees for harvest in the future for wood. There are problems of hillside in that canyon, and walnut trees, let me sell it very nicely that, we can go right up the side of the hill, not impart any problems for the natural resources or the deer and so on that are in the area, and someday, perhaps, somebody can forest some of that black walnut out. My father and mother and I, now my wife, have worked hard on that property. We produced over $22,000 this year, just at the farmer's market, and we're still totaling further. We're adding firewood to the end of the year, and we'll know what our totals are. We've met every single state requirement, as far as we know, for Williamson Act coverage, and we've worked really hard to maintain that. I thank you for your time. This is a little bit shorter. As I say, I'm not a public speaker. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you.
Please reconsider if you can. Thank you.
Good comment. Mr. Agriculture Commissioner Fred Crowder.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Fred Crowder, the Agricultural Commissioner. Just as a point of clarification, there is no agricultural commission. We have an Agricultural Advisory Committee. It gets confusing, because some states have an agricultural commission to oversee their agricultural regulations, and, but here in California, each county has an agricultural commissioner that works in conjunction with Ag Advisory. But anyway, I'm, I'm in agreement with the Planning Department's recommendations, with the exception of the Gossett property. I have some concerns with regards to the Boardy property and the fact that there are very little animals, there are very few animals on that property to justify keeping it under the Act. I've made visits to all the properties, and I've talked to Mr. Boardy and, and the Audubon Society, and it's a beautiful property, and their intention is to keep it into agriculture, but there needs to be some animals on the property in order for it to qualify as commercial agriculture. The Gossett property is my primary interest. Taking that one property, Mr. Gossett, when I spoke with him, originally purchased that property to make sure that he had 40 acres to be eligible for the Williamson Act. Now that we've changed our policy, we're going to pull him out of the Act and penalize him for having done the right thing 20, 30 years ago. And so, I would encourage you to take that into consideration. Additionally, taking that larger parcel out of the Williamson Act, you know, the Williamson Act is voluntary, but for many growers, it is essential that, in order for them to stay in the business. Taking that property out of the Williamson Act could increase the property taxes to the extent that he's forced to sell it, or he's not able to continue farming the lower, the lower property. So, you know, that's exactly what the Williamson Act was intended to address, was, you know, the affordability of land. And here in San Mateo County, land is very expensive, and to pay the property taxes is, is difficult. Regarding the, can I, just, one more statement on the, the upper property, they also have barns on there where they store equipment. Planning's position is that so few, so little equipment is stored up there that it's negligible. I would question that, and our county policy does not distinguish whether or not how much is being stored up there. The policy only says whether or not those properties or those facilities are being used to support the adjacent property, and they are indeed doing that. And so, I, I believe the property meets the requirements of the Act and the county's policy, and I encourage you to reconsider the nonrenewal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. You know, there was this question that had been raised about the 10,000 versus the 20,000, and I don't know, council can address that, but it seems there's two very different opinions about that. I mean, I'm sure the law, what does the law say on this point?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer, refer this question to, to Mr. Fox, who's been working very closely with Mr. Monowitz on this whole Williamson program. But as I recall, our, our position is that every, you know, every, every parcel has to be treated separately, has to be dedicated agriculture in and of itself. But there is a question of the contract, which you have before you. I don't have them in front of me, so I'm gonna refer this question to Mr. Fox.
Mr. Fox, you know, the specific language that we were given, for multiple parcels under one contract, income requirements will apply to the contracted area, not for each individual parcel. If you can address that.
Right. So, it's essentially two different tests that are being applied, and I think they're getting a little bit mixed here. One has to do with the income threshold, and I believe that language, which reads, "For multiple parcels under one contract, income requirements will apply to the contracted area and not for each individual parcel," doesn't mean that if there's a $10,000 per parcel income threshold, that an adjacent parcel that's below that threshold isn't counted, that you would treat the whole contracted area as one. It just means that if one of your parcels generates less than $10,000, it can be aggregated if it's in common ownership, and the entirety of the ownership looked at for purposes of the income threshold. But, but really, what, what Mr. Monowitz was trying to convey is that that's not the reason why the standard may not be met in this case. The requirement under the state constitution is that a parcel can't be given a tax benefit unless it's enforceably restricted. There is a requirement under the Williamson Act that land be dedicated to agriculture, all parcels be dedicated to agriculture in order to qualify for participation in the program, and it's been the judgment of staff that that, the individual parcels that we're talking about are not sufficiently dedicated to agriculture. So, it's really that standard of when, at what point can you say the parcel is truly dedicated to agriculture, before the tax benefit can be conveyed to that parcel? And needless to say, the fact that they are separate parcels means that they can be legally conveyed, and the fact that they're in common ownership now is not the only thing that the county would look at to determine whether or not the parcel is, is really adequately participating in the program. A particular owner at a particular moment in time who owns adjacent property may dedicate most of their farming operation to a, to a nearby parcel, an adjacent parcel, but in order to participate that parcel in, in the program, the county's interpretation thus far has been, you have to show that the parcel is dedicated to agriculture, and in, in this particular case, it's just a difference of opinion between the Ag Advisory Committee and the Ag Commissioner and planning staff about whether that threshold's been met. So, we, instead of focusing on the income threshold, you can look at the-
I think that's helpful. So, we're really, we really have to make a judgment call about, quote, dedication to agriculture.
Exactly. And at what point will a parcel be deemed to have been dedicated to agriculture based upon its relationship to another parcel that is being farmed?
All right. Are there, any other questions for Mr. Monowitz, or any other remarks, Mr. Monowitz, on this, on, on this parcel? No? So, come back to the board for comments, for discussion.
Well, I'm willing to make a motion, Mr. President, if you're ready.
If, unless there's other comments. Mr. Harzle, you have a comment?
Well, just one more comment. And in terms of the Gossett property, I think that Mr. Gossett has indicated, I think, really, he's really shown an intent to dedicate to agriculture. It may not be adequate now, but it looks like he's, you know, can continue to do other things like the walnuts and maybe more Holly Springs, and, you know, more than a third of acre. Sounds like you got the message, do a little bit more. But on the Audubon Society, I actually-
We're gonna come back to that one.
We're doing it secondly.
Oh, we're gonna do it secondly. Let me make a comment on it anyway, this, this time, if I could.
Good save, but we'll come back to you when we do.
Oh, okay, well, come back to me.
So, I'd like to make a motion that, that the G-Bar-G Ranch parcel number 0483500110 be included in the Williamson Act.
Second.
You lost me here. Which one is that?
This is the Gossett property that we discussed.
Oh, I see. You went by the numbers.
Right. So, there's been a motion made, and second, is there, is there a discussion? I, no, I would, you know, add if, you know, the assessment is dedication to agriculture, I'm comfortable supporting the, the motion. So, unless there's other comments, we can take, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That, that carries unanimously. So, that property will remain in the Williamson Act.
On the Audubon Society property that is about roughly 150 acres, but it actually is attached to 1,000 acres. And should we really talking about a 1,000 acre parcel that has a mere seven head of cattle? That's really inadequate. And so I am...
We do have one speaker on that before we take any action.
In any case, just comment on that.
Okay. So if we could, Tamara Gallanter would like to speak.
Tamara Gallanter, I'm attorney for the National Audubon Society. And I'm here today to urge the Board of Supervisors to follow the recommendation of the Agricultural Advisory Committee and the recommendation of the Department of Conservation. That recommendation is an attachment E. to the staff report, if you couldn't find it in your documents. And to keep the National Audubon Society's Williams Sisters Ranch under Williamson Act contract. This parcel is an integral part of the 1,050 acre Williams Sisters Ranch, which is one of the oldest working ranches in the community. And today Lou Boardy and his wife Joan continue to live on and raise cattle on the property. The property is used only for agricultural use. Now, as Lou and his wife age and with the recent drought, the number of cows has decreased. But the cows continue to graze on the ranch property, including on this particular parcel. And it's still a commercial operation that generates income for the Boardys. Audubon has submitted documents to the planning staff showing the grazing areas, when they use all the areas, including this particular parcel, the fencing and the water sources. And keeping this land under Williamson Act contract really fulfills the goals of the Williamson Act to preserve agricultural lands. Without the Williamson Act contract, the Audubon will have no choice but to consider seeking a welfare exemption for the ranch property. Well, it can enter into a new contract that has significant costs and time and resources. Therefore, the Audubon Society respectfully requests that you keep this parcel under Williamson Act.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Can I ask you a quick question? So if I heard you correctly, you said because of the drought, it diminished the number of cows or the grazing there. Were there larger numbers at some point in time before the drought?
Yes, there were. At its, the Boardys have been on the property for over 50 years and at one point, there were significantly more cows on the property. And Audubon is willing to explore putting more cows on the property, but for right now, the Boardys are there and they are keeping the maximum number of cows they are able to keep, given the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have any other speakers. So questions or comments by the board?
I guess I have a question for Mr. Monowitz. In looking at this particular parcel, did you take into consideration the whole issue around drought and the fact of diminishing numbers because of that, that this would have the potential for greater numbers should the drought subside?
That is more recent information that I don't think was fully vetted when we initially made our recommendations. You know, whether or not the impact of the drought is so significant that really seven cattles are the maximum amount that can be sustained, we don't have evidence to support that. But I understand that the drought certainly could have implications on the number of cattle that can be supported on the site. Our estimate was that a site of this size could support, you know, roughly 70. And I imagine that a lower number would be justifiable in conditions such as this, but as low as seven, I think that's where we have question.
Thank you.
Are there other comments?
I'm just going to make a, I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendation of non-renewal on the Audubon Society property. Just seven is just way too few. And, you know, certainly they'll have an opportunity to be able to, you know, contract with other cattle growers or cattle people to be able to increase that. But that's essentially 1,000 acres for seven cattle. That simply is inadequate.
Motion, do we have a second? I'll second that. So there's a motion and second, we can have discussion.
I guess, you know, I guess I'm using the drought as a reason that I could understand that happening. I mean, we read about it all the time that we're having difficulties in so many different areas. I mean, I do get that if we didn't allow this, in the meantime, between now and 2020, they could prove us, you know, come back and contract. But I think I do believe that the drought does have an impact and we're probably not going to be out of it this year either, even though it's going to be raining. So I'm more inclined to make a motion to retain this in the Williamson Act.
Can we make, can we make a motion when there's already a motion been made?
You could do a substitute motion.
It's a substitute motion. Okay, I'll second that.
All right. So there's a new motion on the floor to uphold the appeal. Any further, any further discussion? Seeing none, we can take a vote. All in favor of upholding the appeal, so that would be supporting the, going against the staff recommendation, but in line with the ag group.
I vote for that.
I do too.
Wait a minute.
We're voting on the substitute motion. That always comes first.
Substitute motion, so.
No.
Okay. I guess maybe we should take a roll call since it will be a switch vote.
Supervisor Groom?
Yes.
Supervisor Horsley?
No.
Supervisor Solcom?
Yes.
Supervisor Tissier?
Yes.
President Pine?
No. All right. So that carries by a three to two vote and that property is also, remains in the Williamson Act. And that concludes this item. Our next item is a planned unit development proposal for 91 Loyola Avenue.
Hello again, President Pine, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. The matter before you is a proposal to rezone the 18,750 square foot property located at 91 Loyola Avenue in North Fair Oaks from medium density residential to planned unit development in order to allow it to be subdivided into four lots and improved with four single family dwellings. Here's an aerial photo of the site showing existing zoning districts and the subject parcel outlined in red. Surrounding land uses include single family and multifamily residences and commercial uses along El Camino Real down in the lower left portion of the screen. As shown by the site plan, two of the proposed lots and residences will face the street and the other two homes will be constructed at the rear of the lot. All four lots will be accessed by a single driveway, which will avoid the loss of existing on-street parking spaces. Each residence will have a two-car garage and one uncovered guest parking space. Exterior setbacks along the front, rear and sides of the proposed development are consistent with the setbacks currently required by the existing R2 zoning. The reason the planned unit development is required and proposed is because the lots, the proposed lots do not meet the 5,000 square foot minimum and the setbacks on the interior property lines are not in accordance with current R2 standards. So the project has been designed to be of a scale and character that is compatible with the neighborhood. The appearance of the two homes that will face Loyola Avenue is shown by the elevation in the lower left corner of the slide. And the street-facing view of the two homes that will be constructed in the rear portion of the property is shown in the lower left corner of this slide. The project includes extensive landscaping that will both soften the visual appearance of the project and compensate for the loss of three trees that will be removed by the This slide shows a visual simulation of the project once it's been constructed with the two homes fronting Loyola Avenue and the two homes at the rear of the property, one of which is largely shielded from view by an existing tree that will be preserved. The staff recommendation of approval is based on our analysis of the project's consistency with the various plans and regulations that form the standard of review for the project. Specifically, we've determined that the project is consistent with the general plan and housing element. It conforms to the policies and land use designations established by the North Fair Oaks Community Plan. It proposes a type and design of development that's compatible with the surrounding zoning districts and is consistent with the planned unit development and subdivision exception criteria in our regulations. The project's been subject to a rigorous public review, beginning with a pre-application meeting that was conducted in February of this year, a hearing before the North Fair Oaks Community Council in April, and a planning commission hearing in October. Both the North Fair Oaks Community Council as well as the planning commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the project. The one issue of debate that remains regarding the project is the type and timing of street improvements that should be made along Loyola Avenue in conjunction with the development. As noted by various speakers throughout the review process, Loyola currently lacks a complete sidewalk, which has raised concerns about the ability of the street to sustain higher density development and provide for pedestrian safety. While there's a segment of sidewalk on the south side of Loyola, this project's on the north side, there's about a 300-foot segment that does not currently have sidewalks. So the Department of Public Works' street improvement schedule calendars Loyola Avenue for improvement in the year 2017. Prior to that time, Public Works will survey the property owners to determine the type of street improvements they desire and are willing to pay for. The results of a prior survey indicate that the property owners were not in favor of installing additional sidewalks. Whether the project should pay for and/or provide for sidewalks along Loyola Avenue, either directly in front of the project site or on the south side of Loyola where there are gaps in the existing sidewalk, was discussed extensively during the planning commission meeting. While there was interest in having the developer construct sidewalks, it was determined that it would be premature to enforce such a requirement because the design and elevation of the sidewalk improvements need to be engineered in conjunction with the larger street improvement projects scheduled by Public Works in 2017. It's unknown at this time whether that project will include sidewalks on the north side of Loyola. Thus, as recommended for approval by the planning commission, no specific requirement for road improvements were called for at this time. The road improvements would be determined in accordance with the typical Public Works process described previously. However, since the planning commission hearing, staff has continued to work with one of the concerned neighbors, the applicant in the Department of Works, to determine what can be done at this point in time to ensure that the project contributes its fair share to the necessary street improvements. To this end, staff has crafted a new condition of approval, which we're recommending today, which requires the applicant to pay, place an amount of money equivalent to that which would be required to construct a length of sidewalk equivalent to the length of the project's street frontage. The language of that condition is here on your screen. I won't read it for you verbatim, but in essence, its intent is to ensure that this project contributes places an amount of money into an escrow account that will allow the Department of Public Works to apply that to future street improvements, including the provisions of sidewalks, if that is what the community elects to have installed. And that completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Monowitz? We do have two speakers.
Yeah, do you mind if I ask a question, Mr. President?
Of course not.
Mr. Monowitz, on Loyola Avenue, you mentioned the 300 feet where there's no sidewalk. So on that side of the street, there's a sidewalk and then there's a gap, there's no sidewalk, and then it picks up again after 300 feet.
That's my understanding.
And then it's only on one side of the street?
That's correct.
The other side of the street does not have a sidewalk?
That is correct.
Okay. And so this developer fee would, the deposit would be made in order to finish, complete that 300-foot gap section or something else?
It could be used for that purpose. The idea is that the money gets placed in an account, but the way it gets used depends upon the results of the Public Works process, which involves surveying the community and determining...
I guess where I'm a little confused is there's a process where neighbors vote.
Right.
And in the past, they voted for no sidewalk.
Right.
But there's already a sidewalk there with a gap in it that's filled with mud when it rains, for instance. And, you know, it kind of, you know, this Wednesday, Thursday, when it rains, it's going to perhaps, you know, get very messy down there. So I'm a little confused on how that vote, voting process would go, given the fact that there's already a sidewalk there. Does everybody have to vote to, you know, complete the 300 feet or am I missing something?
I know that the director of Public Works is here and he might be able to provide some better information in that regard.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about the public street process also.
Thank you. Through the president, the way that the process works on street reconstruction projects is that we have road standards for the communities that we reconstruct these streets in. In this case, the road standards are either an 18-foot wide street with two or three-foot curb and gutter, or a 22-foot wide street with either two or three-foot, excuse me, not curb and gutter, valley gutters, swales. The department does not install sidewalk curb and gutter. Those sidewalks have been put in over time based upon prior standards that were developed over the decades. So as properties develop, one of the conditions on those properties were over time to put in the sidewalk curb and gutter. So you've got this hodgepodge of sidewalk curb and gutter out there. What we do when we go out to the community is we submit a survey and talk about the width of the roadway. If in those discussions, when we talk about what the community wants, the community does desire to install that additional sidewalk curb and gutter, that would be done through an assessment district process. So the people on that street would pay for those additional improvements above and beyond what the county road standard is. That's the process in practice that we've used since those road standards were adopted roughly 13, 14 years ago. So that's the process we'll go through. In this case, if there is a deposit of this sidewalk funds and the community agrees to self-assess themselves for the remainder of the sidewalk, the money that would be set aside in the escrow account would be applied to installation of the sidewalk curb and gutter. So it's truly a community decision as to whether they would want to add in that additional sidewalk. If they choose not to add in that additional sidewalk, we'll design this county standard road within the confines of the improvements that are there. So you'll see on some streets where there's some curb and gutter, we design a roadway that conforms with that curb and gutter, then it'll zigzag in and out. And the reason why we do have these narrow road standards is it's been shown to kind of control speeds in the communities. Wider roads tend to have drivers driving faster. So the communities over time have preferred these narrower road standards. The other issue and the reason why we don't have answers on these things now is that it truly is a community decision on sidewalk curb and gutter because it will impact parking. Putting in that curb and gutter is going to reduce the amount of parking on those streets. Again, that hasn't been designed, but that's typically part of the things that we discuss when the process, when we lay out these roadways.
Thank you.
Does that mean then in this 300-foot area that doesn't have curb and gutter would have that swale?
Yes.
Okay. So there would be a way for things to drain and people park and all that?
That's correct.
And Mr. Porter, the existing sidewalks, you mean, I know since they were probably installed quite some time ago, how are they likely paid for, the sidewalks that are there now?
They were likely paid for, by the property owner as a condition of approval for whatever development was placed on that property. That's typically how these improvements are installed. And that's common not only in the county, but the cities as well. The cities practice this as well.
Okay.
Supervisor Groom? When was the last vote taken, Mr. Porter?
For reconstruction?
For the side, for the side, not having, to choose not to have sidewalks?
For Loyola Avenue.
Yeah, for Loyola Avenue.
So the last vote on street reconstruction was done over the summer. Actually, we've got a vote coming up right now for a street in West Menlo. But the last project we did was voted on last summer.
The Loyola neighbors voted summer of...
We've not had a vote on Loyola. We're in the process of...
I thought I heard you say a little while ago that there was a vote that said they didn't want sidewalks. I thought you said that in the very beginning.
No, I said that. I'll take responsibility for that. My understanding from working with Diana Shu from...
Hard to tell you apart, you know.
My understanding from working with Diana Shu and Mr. Porter's office is that... My understanding from working with Diana Shu and Mr. Porter's office is that a vote was taken sometime around 2000, maybe a year or two after that, and at that time, they declined to adopt the sidewalks, and that the course of action that's planned by the Department is to resurvey in 2016 to prepare for 2017 improvements.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question for Mr. Porter. The, they're not eligible, if they choose to have sidewalks, they're not eligible to have them until 2017, and that's because of...
A priority list that was established by your board roughly 2000, 2001 timeframe. So, we've got a priority list that was established by the board that we're...
The priority was established 15 years ago.
That's correct.
Is it every, is it every time, do we ever review this and take a new look at things?
Uh, that list has not been back to your board. We could, what that will do is open up the entire process again. So, there will be jockeying for position for those streets.
You know, 'cause I just wonder, as, as housing has a higher demand and, you know, more, more empty vacant lots are being subdivided or built, or plan, a planned development is being formed, maybe, maybe residents have a, a, a different idea than they did 15 years ago.
In terms of standard or priority?
In terms of priority and standards. I mean, you know, 15, 15 years ago, people had different ideas. They, they, we, we weren't quite as congested as we are today. So, I'm just wondering if, if we should be looking at, at new, new standards, or at least in, introducing the subject.
If it's the desire of your board, we can certainly bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Porter, didn't, Mr. Porter, didn't you do, uh, it seems to me you did some sort of a traffic analysis on Loyola, uh, six months ago or so? You revisited the standards that Supervisor Groom was just talking about with a traffic analysis?
My staff very well may have done that. I'm not familiar with that study right now. I know we do speed counts in the neighborhoods quite often. We do get a lot of traffic requests out there.
Okay, well, maybe I have that wrong.
I know we've done quite a bit of work on Selby in that somewhat near area, but I'm not familiar with Loyola at this point. That's not to say it hasn't been done, it just hasn't...
All right. And just out of curiosity, one last question, if I could. Do you, do we know how much that deposit into the escrow account would be?
I, I do not know at this point. We would have to figure out what the construction cost estimates are. We look at the cost of constructing it today, and then we'll index that based upon constructing in two or three years.
All right, thank you.
We do have three speakers on this item. If there's any other questions, of course, we can call you back. So, why don't we go ahead and take those speakers? So, Mr., that's right, we do need to open the public hearing. And we open the hearing now, and we'll ask Mr. Haislip.
Thank you, President Pine, members of the Board of Supervisors. First, it's been a pleasure working with staff on this. They've been very cooperative and helpful, including the development of this language with Mr. Fox, which only took place yesterday afternoon. I'll only address the issue of the drainage. The 300-feet gap that's been discussed is not on our side of the street, it's somebody else's property on the other side, okay? If we had our druthers, we would build a sidewalk, curb, and gutter today. We just need somebody in Department of Public Works to give us a profile and tell us how wide the sidewalk is, how high the curb is, how wide the gutter is. We would do that today at our expense in a, in a heartbeat. Frankly, it would, no pun intended, in, improve our curb appeal, okay? So, that, that would be our druthers. This language, absent being able to do that at this time, is acceptable to us, and the one concern we did, of course, have is what is the amount of money that we're being asked to deposit, which is why this says the, we will get a, an estimate of the reasonable cost, and we can have that discussion at that time. One thing I would like to point out is that I believe this is the first project on Loyola that is being built under the C3, C6 groundwater control measures. And therefore, all the groundwater that currently flows off of this 18,000 square feet into Loyola Road, I guess some of it goes out the back, but most of it does, does go to the front, is being now, under our proposal, completely contained, processed, and treated on-site, so that the construction of this project, regardless of curb gutters or otherwise, will be putting less water into Loyola. So, it's a, it's a benefit to the, the exigent circumstances as it stands right now. So, we, we would urge approval. As I said, we would love to do curb gutter and sidewalk right, right this second, but if you decide that's not the, the way to go, this, this language is acceptable. Thank you for your time.
I did just one question. If, if you, you said you'd be happy to do the curb gutter sidewalk right now, over, over how many feet?
Our property is, is 100 by 187, so it's 100 lineal feet, which is in the language of this.
100 lineal feet, okay. Of course, on your side of the street, right? Any other questions? Okay. Then, thank you.
Thank you.
Harrison Mark Reynolds.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Harrison Reynolds and longtime resident of Loyola, lived next door to the 91 Loyola for over 22 years. I too was faced when we built our home 22 years ago on what to put in front of our property, and we opted to do the, the asphalt paving and a, a little bit of a gutter there. I sympathize with the new property owners on the decision that they need to make. I'm here to speak, one, in total favor of the planned development there. All along the process, we enjoy looking at the plans, everything from the drainage to the parking on-site and the improvements to the property. So, we're really thrilled to see it go in. And I know I speak for my, my mother-in-law, who's over at 81 and 83 Loyola. The other issues that come up with the street improvement, I'm very sympathetic towards. But I want the board to think about something very carefully. I've actually lived on Loyola since 1983. I was a renter for a part of the time until a property owner. Our street has a little time lost. Time has forgotten our street. We have not had the improvements we need. So, I want you to, I, I have to paint a picture because I walk my dog just about every day down Loyola, and I enjoy talking to my neighbors and, and folks. There's a lot of young people now with babies, and they walk their kids. There's three or four of them right now, and they'll be out there today because the weather's pretty nice. Unfortunately, they don't have a sidewalk, and they're walking in the street every single day. And you've got the toddlers that are doing their, their push trikes and their carts and things in the middle of the street. And granted, the street is fairly quiet. There's still a lot of income property on the street. There are a lot of folks that aren't accustomed to having small children around. I raised my four kids on that street. It would really be nice to have sort of a plan, and that would be at least sidewalks on one side of the street, and some improvements to the streets so I don't have to put new suspension on my cars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Friedman.
Mike Friedman, Loyola Avenue. The issue here is primarily pedestrian safety. There are drainage issues, but we're mostly concerned about pedestrian safety, and it's been largely covered. I can pass this around if there were some question about where there are sidewalks and where there aren't sidewalks. The green on this picture is where on Loyola there are sidewalks, and the red is where there is not. The south side is the shorter run, which is the 300 feet, and the north side has some sidewalk, but a lot that's not. Maybe you can pass that around. What I request that you do today is to make a motion that, one, tables this item for future consideration and approval, and instead, indicate to planning staff in Public Works' your willingness to modify the North Fair Oaks Improvement Plan for the situation. That's where we're really hamstrung here. The issue is, is there are very specific rules that were designed to get roads back to the status quo. What we're doing in this neighborhood is bringing in a policy to encourage higher density along mass corridors, but we're hamstrung by the limitations of leaving status quo on the road improvements. And specifically, what I'd like to see you request is for the staff to come back with an estimate of the cost of improving the 300-foot section of the south side of Loyola that's currently covered by the plan, specifically widening the section to 18 feet wide and adding sidewalks. And in addition, to ask them to come back with a plan, the how that in Lufes, including the ones that already are in this language, can be provided by the county to pay for those sidewalks. Because the issue before us now is you're asking the neighborhood to pay to add sidewalks in order to overcome the problems of adding higher density in the area that you want to add. So, thank you, and if you can also consider adding back a clawback feature for any property that receives sidewalks without full payment, so that in case those properties in the future are developed, that you have a way to get that money back, that would be very good as well, and I hope you can support this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we'll come back to the board for discussion or any further questions.
I, I have a question for Mr. Monowitz. I want to make sure I understand this. You're basically saying currently that in order for this particular development to have curbs and gutters, it would have to go to a vote of the entire area there, the Loyola area?
That's essentially correct, is that we wouldn't recommend moving forward with curb and gutters in front of this project right now because of the need to coordinate that with the Department of Public Works' larger plan for the street.
Because if I look at that picture, if you, if they did put curb and gutter, then you've got that smack dab in the middle and nothing on either side. Not nothing, but, so it kind of, okay, that's what I want to make sure I...
That's correct, and if I could add to that, because the street is flat and we do have this drainage ponding problem, we would be concerned that establishing sidewalks in, in front of this project could push the water elsewhere onto other folks' properties until that larger drainage issue is addressed. We're not quite sure how to design the sidewalks here.
You know, I do understand Mr. Friedman's concerns about trying to get something more comprehensive there. I think we all get that. I don't think it's fair to this property owner to not allow this to go forward. This is gonna take a little bit longer, probably quite a bit longer, and I think we all see where some of the downfalls have been over time, and maybe there's a better policy we come up with for this, especially as North Fair Oaks is, we are creating more infill, and we, their council likes this idea, that's what they're striving for. So, I do agree with Mr. Friedman, we need to take a harder look at. I don't think we should penalize this particular property owner because it's, this is gonna take time, and they're putting in the appropriate drainage, they still will have the swale, so it, it won't add insult to injury, but it won't have the curb and gutter that I think would be a nice additive down the road. So, I just want to put my two cents in on that one.
Thank you.
Is it possible, I don't, I don't know if it's possible, but you could tell me, or Mr. Porter, is it possible to let the project go forward with the, with the development, and at the same time, in parallel, take up Mr. Friedman's suggestion that we, you know, sit down and get a plan together for this area? And at the risk of opening Pandora's Box, I would just say, you know, that road standards that were adopted 15 years ago, you know, really ought to be looked at, given the developments of Facebook and the housing here, and the cut-through traffic and all the rest of it. And maybe it's possible to do those things in parallel, to do the development, but then have Public Works and Planning sit down with the neighbors and perhaps this supervisor, others if you want to join, and kind of work in parallel, and then also the idea of revisiting the 15-year-old standards.
Through the President, we can certainly look at that. This is really a community issue. I think what, what Public Works tries to do is to implement the standards that have been adopted by your board as a minimum, and then any additional improvements desired by the community are added on as a, an improvement that is paid by the community. And that process and practice has been carried out through the years. I wasn't here when those standards were adopted, but I understand it was a quite contentious debate. We can certainly open that up. As, as many people want sidewalks, there's a group of people that don't want sidewalks. So, when we open that up, it, it will be a, a very hearty debate. In terms of priorities, we have stuck with the priorities, and we do get calls regularly from people that are further down the priority list that ask to be moved up.
Yeah.
And we've been trying to be very reasonable in sticking with that priority list. So, I think we might want to bifurcate those two issues and look at road standards, and really costs as well. I think you'll see an item later that talks about transportation funding. When we start adding additional improvements into the roadway system, they have to be maintained, but also they have to be paid for in some way. So, it's, it's a really holistic look that needs to come to your board in terms of what the community might want, what it might cost, both in terms of construction and maintenance, and how that might affect the entire roadway system. But I, I guess that's kind of a long answer to, to the question that, that we can certainly bring it back, but it, it may be a, a very spirited debate.
If you wouldn't mind refreshing my memory, under one of the, under Measure A sales ta, under Measure A transportation sales tax, how much money do we receive for, for roads, roads and street improvements?
I would have to come back to you with that figure, but it's a small percentage of what we get...
Right.
Relative to gas tax.
Yeah, but, but I mean, and, but, but that's a set, we do have, we're a self-help county with our, so we do have some additional money. And then, and then CCAG passed, CCAG sponsored Measure M last year, which was some additional money, was it not?
Right, there was, they raised the vehicle license fee.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have a couple of extra pots of money that we can look at for our...
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Unfortunately, if you combine all the pots of money, it's inadequate to maintain the current pavement condition and decks in this...
No, and that's, that's why I think we, if we, if we, if we take a look at our road and street, we can also look at financing options and, and take a fresh look at that as well.
Yeah, in fact, through the President...
Especially, you know, for, because, one more thing, if I may. When we did the North Fair Oaks specific plan, I mean, we have a lot of street and sidewalk improvements in that plan. And so, that's, we're gonna need to look at funding that as well.
And, and I think, just to finish off, I think what we really need to provide your board is the full picture of what this means, because it's, it is specific to Loyola, but this has implications county-wide. And we really want to develop a policy that meets the needs of the residents, but is sustainable from our perspective in terms of maintaining the roadway system. So, I think that is a, a big issue that really needs to come back to your board for consideration.
Mr. Martin, I have just a quick question. The, the new condition that was just drafted, those monies are dedicated to improvement on the north side, right, in front of the, of the parcel? I mean, in other words, because there's an interest in perhaps having a sidewalk, complete sidewalk on the south side, but would, these monies couldn't be used for that? Am I reading that correctly?
Our intent was that these monies could be used anywhere along Loyola Avenue.
Either side, okay, that's important to me, okay. All right, we need to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
And I'll also move to the three recommendations to approve the zoning text and map amendments, minor subdivision, and the exceptions of the subdivision, adopting the ordinance changed, et cetera, et cetera, and to adopt an ordinance to enact applicable to the PUD 138.
Supervisor Tissia, do you want to add this new condition as well?
With this condition as well, yes.
And does that mean, can I ask a question at this point? With the motion, does that mean that in parallel, we're gonna analyze some of these topics that we brought up today?
I think we're gonna give direction to staff.
We're gonna give direction.
Yeah, I don't think it need a motion, but...
Okay, very good.
So, we have a motion, we need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, and plus, we are giving direction to the staff and Mr. Porter to revisit some of these bigger issues about how we deal with our streets. I mean, certainly the complete street movement is kind of a new one, too, so maybe, I guess we'd carefully wish for here, but so is the direction. Okay, so, our, our next item is a discussion of community trace aggregation. Before we do that, we'll just kind of do a little time check. I, I kind of thought with the disruption, we'd be about an hour behind, or about an hour and 15 minutes behind. Yeah, my hope would be, we would get through this item and, well, first, maybe it's a show of hands, how many people here are for the community trace aggregation? Okay, and I, I don't have many speakers on that, I don't think we need a lot of... Oh, do we have a, I'd like to see how many we have on that. Okay. Okay, well, I'm thinking, you know, we may be 30 to 45 minutes, let's assume 45 minutes. You know, I put us out to 12:30 for Measure A. Of course, there's a lot of people here for Measure A. We could, I did want to kind of check on our process. We have a hard stop at 1:30. We'd have, if we just went straight through, we would have an... We'd have, if we just went straight through, we would have an hour. So, I guess we can proceed in that way unless there's any other approach desired. Okay. Let's get going on community choice aggregation. I'd like to go ahead and introduce this item. I'm very excited to do so. I mean, what we're doing today is really taking the first step in exploring the possibility of starting a community choice energy aggregation program to serve the residents of San Mateo County. Community choice aggregation allows cities and counties to aggregate the buying power of individual customers to purchase or develop clean energy. So, today we'll hear a presentation from, on CCAs, from Shawn Marshall and Jim Egomire. Shawn is the Executive Director of Lean Energy, and she was instrumental in the formation of California's first CCA in Marin County. And as you know, Jim is the head of our new Office of Sustainability. So, I'm very excited about the possibilities here, really for three reasons. First, you know, to spur, to spur the creation and use of clean energy, to provide our customers with competitive rates and allow for some local innovation. On the first matter, it's news to no one that the amount of carbon we've put into the environment is, into the air has changed our environment significantly, and we're going to have to live with those consequences for decades to come. And I believe it's incumbent on, on us to do everything we can to try to lower those emissions because unless the globe can collectively find a way to do that, we will have catastrophic change in the environment. So, this is clearly a step in that direction. Secondly, it's exciting to see that where this has been deployed in Marin and Sonoma, the rates are actually very competitive and actually in the current marketplace, less expensive than offered by PG&E. We, of course, we'll be talking about that as we explore this topic. And third, the, the idea of catalyzing innovation at the local level and potentially energy production at the lower level. You know, with the CCA, we've seen in Sonoma and in Marin, a lot of energy being produced in their counties. It enables things like aggressive net metering whereby you can really incent people to put more solar on their rooftops and sell it back to the authority. It provides mechanisms for, for really aggressive energy efficiency programs. So, I look forward to the presentation today, and I think this, this program has, has great promise. This is the beginning of a dialogue in the, in the county. As we'll talk about with next steps, we'll need to do very substantial outreach with our, our cities and our, and other stakeholders to see if this is, makes sense for the county. But we, so we begin that today with this presentation. So, Mr. Egomire, excuse me, I think my colleagues who represent the room will have a few comments.
Just, just very few. I think that this is a momentum whose time has come. We, we have a number of cities in our county who are working on it already. It's, I think, in, in the, our tradition of how we've been working on large items and bringing the cities with us at the same time, just makes sense for community aggregation. I know that there's a number of cities here today who have already started discussing this. We have a couple of cities who have formed commissions on, on sustainability, and this is one of their, their topics at their meetings. So, I think it's good to start early and start with a partnership and go forward together.
Thank you. Ms. Egomire.
Thank you, President Pine. Good morning. Still morning. Good morning, Supervisors and Mr. Byers. As Director of the Office of Sustainability, I'm very pleased to be here today. About three months ago, Supervisor Pine and I first met and just to discuss community choice aggregation, also commonly known as CCA. This initiated the research efforts in our office. It was soon apparent that we required the services of a consultant in our efforts, and an RFQ was issued by our office. As a result, we have contracted for services with lean energy. But before I introduce our consultants, I want to go over our outline this morning. First, we have a brief presentation with a number of slides covering the subject topic, community choice aggregation. But then at the end, we have our staff recommendation regarding the next steps we are proposing to take with your approval. And if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt us along the way. So, as part of our team for this initial phase of research, we hired consulting firm Lean Energy. Shawn Marshall is the founder and Executive Director of Lean Energy, a nonprofit organization that supports the formation and expansion of CCAs nationwide. In 2007, Shawn served on the task force for Marin County's CCA. And from 2009 to January 2012, she served as a Vice Chair for Marine, or Marin Energy Authority, now Marin Clean Energy. She brings a wealth of firsthand experience and knowledge around the formation and requirements of a CCA. Also joining us today is Seth Baruch. Seth has been working in the energy efficiency, renewable energy, and climate issues for more than 20 years. Seth has worked on programs and projects internationally. Since 2007, Seth has been consulting for a number of clients, many active in California's carbon market, and more recently assisting Alameda County with their CCA. So, with that brief background, I'd like to introduce Seth Baruch first, and then followed by Shawn Marshall for today's presentation.
Well, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. It's a pleasure to talk about a topic that I've grown very passionate about. So, I'll just go very quickly through these slides, and then Shawn will, will take over for me. CCA, or community choice aggregation, was authorized in California under Assembly Bill 117 in 2002. And CCA is not just here in California, it's in six other states, as you can see there in the, on the map of the country. And then several, it's under consideration in several other states, including New York and Minnesota. So, quite large states that are considering this with a lot of load and, or have already implemented it. So, it's slowly but steadily spreading across the country. So, when we talk about community choice, what we really mean is sort of a hybrid, really, between the standard integrated utility, investor-owned utility model and, on one side, and municipal utilities on the other. CCAs are somewhere, I guess you could say somewhere in the middle with, where the community choice program procures electricity on behalf of the customers within its jurisdiction. The, that power is moved over the transmission distribution infrastructure of the incumbent utility, in this case PG&E, to customers. So, unlike municipal utilities where they own the transmission lines, the transmission infrastructure stays with, with PG&E. Communities up and down the state are looking at this. Shawn will get more into this in a few minutes, but from Humboldt all the way down to San Diego, county and local governments are looking at community choice to, to develop programs that are very much responsive to the local environmental and economic goals. Environmental, particularly when it comes to greenhouse gas reductions, which we'll get a little more into. It offers customers a choice where none currently exists. So, communities, both communities and customers, can have a say in where their electricity is procured from. Very importantly, because we get this question a lot, CCAs are revenue-supported, they are not taxpayer-subsidized. And in fact, a number of, Supervisor Pine mentioned Marin and Sonoma, those CCA programs, Marin's been running since 2010 and Sonoma just since, since this year, are both cash positive. They run surpluses of about 7% of total expenses. So, it's a total revenue, so it is money that is able to be reinvested into the community. Also, they've, evidence has shown and proven that, to date, CCAs have been, in California, have been able to offer slightly cheaper, sometimes depending on your rate class, more substantially cheaper electricity rates than the incumbent utility. And also important is it allows for a more rapid transformation to energy supplies that can reduce greenhouse gas productions. The mix, the greenhouse gas mix of Marin Clean Energy, for example, is about 20% less greenhouse gas intensive than, than PG&E. Very important also, one of the reasons why this has become very popular is because there are, these net revenues can be reinvested into new energy efficiency programs and, and local innovative things like energy storage and EV charging stations. CCAs really can become a laboratory for innovative energy programs beyond what the utility, the incumbent utility is able to provide. There are, community choice does fit into a broader policy framework and context for, for California. Just very briefly, AB 117 I mentioned, AB 32, which is the Global Warming Solutions Act that is requiring California to get to 427 million tons of emissions by 2020. And obviously, CCA, as I mentioned, is a way to do that. But also, the renewable portfolio standard, to get to 33% renewable energy by 2020, CCAs obviously have to meet that requirement as a load-serving entity. And then the governor's mandate to have 12,000 megawatts of local distributed renewable energy by 2020. So, these are all the local policies and laws, regulations that the CCA, you know, the con, fits into that context. So, we say that community choice is the biggest change you'll never notice. The way the program is set up is the, to date, has been, these programs have been set up through joint power authorities with both the county and local governments within the county as members of the JPA, with the Board of Directors that consists of officials, locally elected officials. PG&E, as I mentioned, still continues to provide the billing and line maintenance and customer service, so there's a power outage, you still call PG&E. The, and it's very important, this is a crucial point to make, is that CCA is an opt-out program, which means that if a local community decides to create a CCA, under AB 117, all customers are automatically enrolled in that program unless they choose to opt out. And under the law, customers are, must be given many, many opportunities and notices to opt out and return to PG&E, which they can do at any time. In addition, the, the Public Utility Commission does have sort of, I would call it a lighter regulatory touch on CCAs. They are, as I said, have to meet the RPS and resource adequacy requirements, but the ability to set rates, that resides with the Board of Directors of the CCA. If you look on the screen there, it's a little hard to see, but again, what you get when you get a, when you join a CCA is a PG&E energy statement. The, it's separated into transmission, distribution charges, and the generation charges. The generation charges, you'll see there, it's number three. This is for Marin Clean Energy, you have the, the MCE energy generation charges. So, again, not too much difference, but, but, but still a big impact on being able to, to make a difference in your local community. Last slide, and I'll pass it over to Shawn. It's important for everyone to be aware that there are some risks associated with creating a, a community choice program. We do think that most of those risks have been mitigated after what Marin and Sonoma had to go through, Marin in particular. But we do have now four years of experience with Marin in handling some of these risks. Number one, of course, is that a CCA has to be rate competitive, otherwise people will go to the competition, in this case PG&E. So, it is important that the CCA have the ability on its team to sign long-term and short-term power contracts in a competitive market and diversify its portfolio, particularly local renewable resources, which tend to be lower cost over the long term. The opt-out rates, again, the second item there, very related to the first, if the, if the rates are higher, more customers will opt out. That will certainly affect the ability of the CCA to operate over the longer term and do the things that it's set out to do. Typically, we've seen opt-out rates in the 10% to 20% range. Sonoma, which is the second CCA program, has a much lower opt-out rate than Marin, which was the first. And then obviously, there's political concerns within the community about, you know, whether the government should be getting into the power business. We have felt that CCA has a, sort of appeals to both progressives and conservatives in terms of meeting local environmental objectives, but also providing choice and competition where none previously existed. And then finally, and this is probably the, the most significant risk, is there are, at times, legislative and regulatory proceedings that take place in Sacramento that affect the outcome, can affect the, a way, the ability for CCAs to operate. Most recently, you may be familiar with AB 2145, which would have changed the CCA from an opt-out to an opt-in program, severely limiting the ability of CCAs to operate. That bill did not make it through, made it through the Assembly, but not the Senate. And so, those risks exist, and they should be, the, the way to handle that, of course, is to proceed with, to participate in any of these legislative or regulatory proceedings, which Marin and Sonoma County CCAs certainly do. So, with that, I'll pass it over to Shawn.
Thanks, Seth. Thank you, and good morning, Supervisors. Okay, so I'm going to lead us through a couple of slides that will talk a little bit about the experience in both Marin and Sonoma, just case studies, so you can see how CCA is performing in real time to our neighbors in the north. Marin Clean Energy, here's the overview here. As you heard Seth say, service began in May of 2010 for Phase 1 customers. Both Marin and Sonoma are starting out in a phased approach so that you get your operations up and running, and then you begin to enroll the rest of your customers. In our case, in Marin, we started with 10% of the customer load and then fairly rapidly moved on to bring, to enroll the rest of the customers in the county. Right now, Marin is serving customers in all of the county, plus the city of Richmond. More recently, the Napa, unincorporated Napa County has voted to join Marin, as well as the city of Benicia and the city of San Pablo and Contra Costa. As of today, Marin is serving 125,000 accounts. They have retained 77% of their customer base, so their opt-out rate then is 23%. Service areas, we've already discussed, has broadened beyond the county, which significantly adds to their ability to spread costs over their account and also to apply for additional funding opportunities in, from both the state and the CPUC levels. They have a 13-member Board of Directors, soon to expand with the addition of Napa and those others. A quick footnote here, it is the case in both Marin and Sonoma that the Board of Directors is comprised of local government representatives, typically one board member per jurisdiction. There is a two-tiered voting structure that also will take into account the load size of a particular jurisdiction, should there be any debate on a particular procurement issue. In either case, that second-tier voting structure has, has not been invoked to date. But it's important to know that there are several layers to the onion in terms of governance on this. To date, Marin has reduced its greenhouse gas by 131 metric tons of GHG's between the 2010 and 2013 reporting, reporting years. And this year, saving MCE customers about $6 million total in electricity charges. We, Marin is often asked, you know, where are you sourcing your power? And it's becoming increasingly asked in Sonoma as well. I only have a slide today for Marin, but over the last four years, Marin has diversified its power portfolio, now receives energy from 17 different suppliers, started with one, and then you, you build out your, your supply portfolio. Importantly, the result of all of those power contracts has been 177 megawatts of new renewable power being built on behalf of MCE customers. And this is the kind of economic multiplier effect that we talk about. Of that 177 megawatts, 20 megawatts is being built in the service territory of Marin County and the city of Richmond. And that's predominantly solar installations in county and across the bay. And that is, that translates to enough power to, enough energy to power approximately 85,000 homes per year. Here's the question that everybody always asks. We have a slide comparison, residential for Marin, and then next will be commercial for Marin. Sonoma will have these comparisons soon, but so far, Sonoma has only rolled out to its commercial customers. They will be, become, be enrolling their residential customers, starting actually next week and into January. So, shortly, we'll have these similar comparator for Sonoma. But in Marin, you'll see there that PG&E's default product for residential customers is 22% renewable product. MCE rolled out, has a default product of a 50% minimum renewable. There's 100% option, which they call a deep green. So, what's circled there is a price for the residential. I happen to live in Marin, so I am a customer, that is, as you can see, a couple dollars less than PG&E's 22% renewable. If you opt up, voluntarily opt up to the 100% product, you're going to pay, be paying a couple dollars more. So, I, I did share, I think, some, with some of you, this month's bill, and my, at my house, it's about $3 more a month to get 100% deep, deep green power. And then a fourth product that MCE is just about to roll out is significantly more. And what that is, is that if people want to invest in a community solar project, if, for example, like me, I live under trees, I don't have solar on my rooftop, if I want to invest in that net metered product, I pay that amount, but that credit comes back to me on my bill. So, it's a virtual net metering product. Substantially more, but it's a voluntary option for people who are really into it. On the commercial side of things, the picture is actually better. Substantial cost savings at both the default light green as well as the 100% dark green. Substantial cost savings at both the default light green, as well as the 100% dark green options over the current PG&E rates. If we are invited to come back into next year, we'll be glad to share with you the projected rate increase that PG&E currently has before the CPUC, that has to be approved by the end of the year. So we'll have some real-time numbers to share with you in terms of how this is stacking up, given the rate increase currently proposed by PG&E. Here's some quick overview of Sonoma. They literally just started service, what is that, six months ago? And as I said, rolled out to 22,000 commercial customers. This month, they will be then rolling out to the rest of their residential customer and municipal accounts. They have a 12% opt-out rate, so just about half of what we experienced in Marin. We can tell you why, or, you know, a little bit about why, if you have a question about that. The service area started out with about three-quarters of their jurisdictions joining the JPA when they launched earlier this year. Since that time, they've gone, they've looped back out, and the only remaining jurisdiction not part of the Sonoma Clean Power is Petaluma, and that's coming before their city council next week. So I'm going to wager a guess that by the end of this year, Sonoma Clean Power will cover all of the county and include all of the jurisdictions in its service territory. Their rates are, on average, 4% to 11% below currently offered by PG&E. That 4% would be residential, there's, just like in Marin, there's a greater rate savings impact on the commercial side. They launched with a default product at 33% qualified renewable. They also have a voluntary opt-up to 100%, which they call evergreen. Their 100% product is backed by local geothermal, so the Calpine Power Plant in Sonoma expanded their operations, they bought the power to serve that 100% portfolio for their customers. And, very exciting, in a very short period of time, Sonoma Clean Power has contracted for 70 megawatts of new solar, new solar product for their customers that will be coming online in the current year or two. Here in, in San Mateo County, as mentioned by Jim, CCA does respond directly to your climate action plans and those of several of your cities. It does help you achieve your greenhouse gas reduction goals rapidly, and probably more cost-effectively than some of the other measures that you might consider. And so we can take a deeper dive into that later, if this is something that you decide to be interested in. Mentioned here, the county's energy efficiency climate action plan does contemplate CCA as a supportive measure. I believe all San Mateo County cities have, or are in the process of passing climate action plans. Last I heard, 19 out of 20 had passed caps. And the city of San Mateo has included CCA, and I believe one additional city has, has named CCA as a, a potential opportunity, Menlo Park, in its five-year strategy. A lot of people ask, why should we do this now? And we are, we are working with, as Seth mentioned, a number of communities up and down the state, and the three-year outlook looks very good in terms of power procurement. Power procurement is the number-one tool you have to be competitive with the utility. So it's very important to time the market and do this in a way that doesn't waste time. Because, right now, we have historic gas lows, that low prices, that help to balance out your portfolio in terms of that price competitive. The solar tax credit, the investment tax credit will be shrinking or expiring at the end of 2016. We don't know exactly how that will impact the market, but probably better to try and get in before that tax credit expires, because it does incentivize the private sector to, to build more and to have more available. Importantly, the three big utilities, PG&E, SoCal Edison, San Diego Gas and Electric, are fully resourced up through 2020. Because people often say, well, how do we know, is there going to be enough power out there to buy? And what we've seen is that there's been surplus power. Right now, excess power is available, that's typically offered at lower rates, and because CCA's are small and more nimble, you're often able to kind of get in with smaller contracts at a lower price to diversify your portfolio. Capacity charges are currently low, and, and finally, what we've seen is that CCA is highly bankable. We mentioned the cash revenues currently in place from Marin and Sonoma. The banks like CCA, and there is affordable financing available, should you decide that you need to have some outside financing capacity to get your program started up. Momentum around the bay. Every single county in the Bay Area is engaged to some degree in CCA. Some, as you know, have already implemented. San Francisco is on hold, really caught in a bifurcated governance structure, and, and that political risk I talked about, San Francisco would be the poster child for political risk. And up next, Solano County. So the city of Benicia, as you know, has just decided to join MCE. Hard to say what the rest of the county will decide to do, they could join an East Bay program or form their own. Wrapping up, growing interest around the state, you know, don't need to read all of this, but there is a lot happening, and I really think in the next three to five years, we're going to see a significant number of counties moving in this direction. So let's go to the, the proposed next steps, and Jim, I'll just recap what you had to say. What is proposed next is that we would engage, along with the staff, we'd engage all of the cities in your county to find out, what is their interest, how does this fit into their policy goals? Would they be willing to authorize the release of load data so that we could do a countywide technical study? That's a critical component to know how your program would be sized, and to answer the question, can you be rate competitive, and can you achieve your climate action goals? And so that's real-time, a real-time tech study that needs to be done. And then we would come back with a more robust Phase 1 timeline, work plan, and budget for your review, so you know exactly what this would cost you, and, you know, what that Phase 1 would look like. So I believe that's what's on the table today for your authorization in terms of moving forward. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Questions for, for Sean or Jim before we have some speakers? No, I just had one, you mentioned that PG&E is seeking a change in its rates. Would that also apply to their, you know, their CCA fees, their pass-through fees? Are they, are they suggesting they're going to raise those as well?
So the PCIA, the power charge indifference adjustment, which is the exit fee, is calculated differently, so it is a separate proceeding than the rate increase. But yes, that calculation happens every year, but it's not contemplated in this particular rate hike.
Okay, thank you.
Couple.
Yes, Mr. Horsley.
Quick questions. You did say that there was 131 mega-ton reduction in greenhouse gases. How did that, if, if you stayed with PG&E, would, what would that look like? What would, did they have a similar reduction in greenhouse gases?
They won't have as high a reduction in greenhouse gases, and it all ties back to the type of power that you've got in your portfolio, and that you're putting on the grid on behalf of your customers. So their, their emissions factor is significantly higher than that of either CCA currently in existence, and that translates into your ability to reduce greenhouse gases.
So PUC, also, do they govern the rates charged by the CCA's?
No. No, so like, like a municipal utility, Palo Alto, Alameda, others around the state, rates are set at the local level by the Board of Directors.
And, you know, we were talking about a 13-member Board of Directors, and it's the JPA, I assume that's because there's this individual from each one of the cities that is a member of the JPA. How many employees does, like Marin County have currently? I think you said it's 20?
Currently, it's 20. It started out with two.
Do they work for the county of Marin, or they work for the JPA?
No, yeah, so they, one, the executive officer started as a county employee, and then when the JPA was formed, she was ultimately hired on to serve as the executive officer of Marin Clean Energy.
Okay. Thanks. One thing you said, somebody said that the solar on your rooftop, actually, you get to sell that back to the authority.
Correct.
That is a great idea.
Yeah, right, so you can take the credit for it, and any excess power you can sell back.
Okay, thanks.
Right, you can put in your own plans for that, that idea. So, yes, Mr. Slocum.
Thank you. This is questions for Mr. Egemeyer. So there's a, a good deal of outreach to do, it sounds like, and I have a selfish question. Who's going to do that outreach? Are we staffed to undertake that sort of an outreach? Do you have to add staff? How, what are, how, what's the detail of that?
We're, we believe that we can handle the outreach in conjunction with lean energy. And what we're thinking about right now is having a, a workshop in the north part of the county, and a workshop in the south part of the county, in which we would invite elected officials and city staff to come to hear more about this and entertain their questions. So that would be our outreach approach.
So the outreach team that currently exists in your office will not be working on this outreach?
No, we do have two staff that are involved in the Office of Sustainability on the CCA project, so they'll be involved. Not the Norfolk Forward Group.
Thank you.
Does that help? Okay.
Through the President, one more question. We were talking with you and Sean the other day about the potential cost of about 1.5 to 3 million. Would you recommend that you finance that initially, or, and then have cities come in? Or have you got some different ideas on how to?
Sean, I think you could answer this.
Sure. You can do it in a couple different ways. So, and we're seeing, you know, different options play out. In Alameda County, they decided to go ahead and, and sponsor the upfront programmatic charges. In essence, what they will do, and what they are doing, is setting up a chart of accounts, so that ultimately, all of the, that upfront investment is repaid back to the county through ratepayer revenue. In other places, they have asked cities for a small amount of money. It's, it depends on what you want to do in terms of accounting. In other places, they've raised private funds to do it.
But looking at the audience, I think we're kind of a fairly easy time finding cities that are interested in participating.
Does that answer your question?
It does answer the question. Thank you very much, Sean.
Yeah, the exciting thing there is if you can recoup those costs ultimately through the, so we do have two speakers, I thought I had others, I have Rick Benia and Cara Cox. Am I missing anyone who wanted to speak? And Pradeep Gupta. Oh, here come a couple more cards. So why don't we start with Rick Benia, followed by Cara Cox? No, those are other, yeah.
Thank you and good afternoon, supervisors. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with enthusiastic support for this item. I've been involved in trying to seek sustainability where I live in San Mateo for the last several years, and I really do see this, especially since the advent of our new Sustainability Commission, the work we're doing on our climate action plan, it's become clear that this is the one most effective way to get where we need to go with our reduction of climate changing gases, greenhouse gas emissions. So I stand today to offer enthusiastic support, say that I'm willing to help in any way I can, and I urge you to please move this forward through the study phase, so that we can move on to implementation. Have a great day.
Thank you, Rick. We appreciate your advocacy today. Cara, Cara Cox, followed by John, John Ebener.
Hi, hello supervisors. I just wanted to very briefly say that there's a lot of community support. Not everyone could be here today, but there's just a really, a lot of passion in the community to support this. I know, because I was involved with the defeat of AB 2145, I think it would be a real shame if we couldn't get something set up in San Mateo County and lead the state, lead the nation towards policies that are much more energy efficient, better for the air we breathe. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is John Ebner, and I am the Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission for the city of San Mateo. The commission's main focus in its first year is to establish a climate action plan for the city to implement. We have been working for the last six months on setting goals and selecting the most effective and prudent tools to achieve the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions to 15% below the 2005 level by, for, or for 2020. What became very clear to the commission early on in this process was that a CCA would be by far the most effective tool to achieve our goals. The citizens of San Mateo have already reduced their greenhouse gas emissions by 9% below the 2005 levels. Most of this has come through behavioral changes only. Our draft cap identifies a total of 57,860 metric tons of greenhouse gases that need to be eliminated from our inventory by 2020. It is projected that a CCA would eliminate roughly 23,720 tons alone, just about 40% of our total goal. A CCA would not only be the, be very effective, but also the least intrusive for not only developers, but any and all property owners and renters. It also will make it much easier to attain the rest of our required reductions and set the city up to go beyond the minimum standards. Where CCA's have been established, the counties have taken the lead in the formation of the JPA. This makes the most sense, as the counties are the leaders, and the cities can then follow their directions and be able to join the CCA with less roadblocks or financial outlays. I strongly encourage that San Mateo County set up a CCA and be very active in promoting and educating all the cities with that, within our community to participate in the program. A CCA will be a huge benefit to the county in reducing the harmful effects that the use of fossil fuels are having on our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We have Councilmember Joe Gothles, who would like to speak, I got, gets a couple more
Good afternoon, supervisors. Three quick things, I'm only here for myself today, it's nice to be with you. This is something that we have to do quickly, and we have to do soon, time is of the essence. Based on the renewable resources that are out there, and being able to put them online, this is something that we need to move forward with quickly. Second, this is the only way to meet the goals in our cap. We've talked about our Sustainability Commission and the goals that are in our climate action plan, this is something that we need in order to get there. And third, there's really two ways to go forward. We could, we could do like a social security reform and appoint a commission to study this, and 20 years from now, we'll be talking about all the recommendations that they made. Or we can set out a bold goal. We, we can do what Kennedy did, we can say, we're going to the moon. And that's what I encourage the, the board to do. Say that we're going to the moon. Say we want to get to 50% renewables by this date. Say we want to get to 75% by this date. Say we're going to get to 100%, but if you don't do that, we're not going to move this forward quick, quickly enough. So please inspire us and, and challenge us, and, and make us go forward, because I know the staff is ready to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gothles. Councilmember Pradeep Gupta from South San Francisco.
Good morning, President Depp Pine and the Board of Supervisors. I just wanted to very briefly mention that, and I'm representing myself today, not the city of South San Francisco, although I'm very much in favor of looking at CCA in a very serious way. And the reason I'm here is that I have some 30, 30 years' experience with the American utility industry, including Southern California Edison Company and EPIRI in Palo Alto. And I think that while there are some, a lot of benefits, as they have been mentioned here, there are some risks involved. And I like to be involved in any working group that you might be thinking about as a subsequent phase to be involved in that. To answer the question from Supervisor Horsley regarding PG&E costs, PG&E has a lot of investments in their centralized generation that they have to recoup for their shareholders and to meet the requirements of PUC to be in the rate base. So that forces them to stay away from overabundance of renewables in their mix. So this gives us an opportunity for the local governments to choose that aggregation, not looking at PG&E costs, but also the, looking at the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll definitely take you up on that kind offer, and with your expertise, you just can't bill us at all, Pradeep. Okay.
Thank you, Catherine Slater-Carter from Montero. I'm a board member on Montero Water and Sanitary District and president of the San Mateo County Special Districts Association. And the Special Districts Association wants to thank Supervisor Pine for coming and speaking to our group the other day, and, and is, I believe we should take a strong look at that, and as the president, I will work with the other special districts in the county to encourage them to get involved in this. I want to thank you. I think Montero has had a small solar energy project for some years that has been valuable to us as a small district, and I would like to see all the special districts follow and get involved with this, because the keeping costs down for everyone, and keeping our environment in a more sustainable state is, is in everybody's interest. So I look forward to staying in touch and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I believe our speaker is Councilmember Cliff Lentz from Brisbane.
Hello, Cliff Lentz, Councilmember of the city of Brisbane. Good afternoon. I just want to thank you for bringing this to our attention today. San Mateo County has been a leader in sustainability, and this just seems like the next step. We have some, some excellent data from the counties in the north of us. We have some excellent data from the counties in the north of us to work from, and I really look forward to engaging in your process of empowering the cities to really investigate bringing alternative energy in a serious way to our county. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Cliff. That's the end of the Speaker cards. Am I missing anyone? Go ahead. All right.
You should have a card there for me as well. I'm Diana Reddy. I'm a veteran leader with Peninsula Interfaith Action, which merged with San Francisco Organizing Project in January, and also a community builder with Housing Leadership Council. So when the staff report included an item that might support affordable housing, I needed to speak to that. Virtually half of all residents in the county and in the cities in San Mateo County are renters, and half of that number are really stressed with the high cost of housing and the high cost of rents. I have one young woman I'm working with right now who works at Jack-in-the-Box, has a three-year-old, and was given a rent increase of $700. She's now renting out her one-bedroom and living on the couch because she can no longer afford the rent. So I encourage you to embrace this program, and we will later be asking you to set aside $3 million to encourage cities for an affordable housing fund, which might be used in conjunction with cities as well to help them use this money for affordable housing. Thank you. Have you found my card?
I think we had you in the Measure A card, and we haven't quite gotten to that point.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will conclude our public comment, I believe. Do you have any final comment, Mr. Ringemeier?
Maybe just to help the Board understand their direction for what we're trying to do here, if I just could summarize our recommendation and some of the proposed steps. One was to really initiate some outreach to our local government and key stakeholders. And then the second part is really to prepare a work plan, timeline, and a budget for our first phase. And we would be returning to your Board in, thank you, in late January, early February, with finding out what support we have from the other cities. So therefore, we'd be able to understand the depth and extent of the work that we need to do for our timeline and budget and work plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ringemeier.
Thank you.
So that will conclude the matter. If everyone is comfortable providing that direction to continue the outreach and to come back into January, February, you know, with a detailed plan. There's no substantial expenditures by the county at this moment. What's great is, you know, we have the advantage of these models from Marin and Sonoma. It's a little bit like buying that brand-new technology, right? It's hard. That first model, you know, if you buy it, it takes a lot of time to get it right, but then after they fix it up, then you'll buy it. So we're a little bit in that situation here.
Do you need a motion to?
I don't think we need a motion, do we? Or we're just giving direction?
If you do, I'll make the motion.
Well, we can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a...
It hurts.
This is an acceptance of a report and direction to staff, so you're welcome to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the report and to direct staff to initiate outreach of all of our cities and to develop a work plan, potentially putting together JPA for Community Choice Aggregation for San Mateo County.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor. All right. All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming. Okay, we're almost exactly where I thought we'd be. We are going to take a really short break, two minutes. It's got to be two minutes. Okay, we are reconvening our board meeting, and we'll now start a discussion on Measure A, and specifically a discussion of board priorities for Measure A expenditures. As everyone knows, you know, the day hasn't gone as scheduled, so we have limited time at this point. So what I suggest, if it's minimal, to my colleagues, is that we hear the staff report, have opportunity to ask questions of the staff, and then take speakers who cannot rejoin us. We have a commitment at 1:30 to join our employees for employee recognition. So we would go attend to that at 1:30 and be back here at 2:15. So we would pick up this discussion and hear additional members of the public at 2:15. So if that... I suggest that we adjourn at 10 past. We need a chance to eat something before we can get to the employees. Does that work? Okay, 2:15. All right, let's begin then with... So again, to summarize, we'll hear the staff report, we'll ask questions, we'll take speakers until 2:15, not 2:15, 1:15, and specifically those who can't come back and join us at 2:15.
Mr. President, members of the Board, Deputy County Manager Reina Faralis will make the presentation. Just one comment to begin the discussion. The material that you have, really, it was our intent that this be used by the Board to look at overall county budget priorities, including Measure A. So to be thinking of this in the context of, are there things that should be there that aren't there? Are there things there that you want to emphasize in the budget so that when we prepare the fiscal year '15 through '17 budgets for the Board, that you will hear in June, that you will see proposals in the budget that reflect the priorities that the Board is going to begin the process of today of setting?
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the Board. We're very mindful of the time, so we'll go through our presentation in the next five to 10 minutes. So the purpose of this hearing is to get direction from your Board on the next two years. As we prepare our next two-year budget, it's important that we capture all of the priorities from the Board and from the community. So by way of background, the way that we have taken a look at setting priorities for the budget over the last 10-plus years is through the Shared Vision 2025, Shared Vision lens. So the Board has undergone two visioning processes in this county, one in 2000 and another one by revisiting the 2010 vision around 2008. So in the 2008 process, the Board created what is now Shared Vision 2025 with the five community outcomes. And then last year, in 2013, developed community impact goals. So there are nine of those. So the priorities that we're recommending to you today is within that framework of the five community outcomes of healthy and safe, prosperous, livable, environmentally conscious, and collaborative, and then the nine community impact goals. So these are our principles that we're using to do priority setting for the budget, including Measure A. So the two-year budget cycle, we prepared our first two-years, real two-year budget for the Board last year, and the process was successful in that it gave us more time to do financial planning and also gave us more time to focus on performance improvements. So over the last year, all of our department heads did present their performance goals to your Board and gave you an idea of what they were seeing as trends and what was important, looking at the future over the next two years. And then as far as the fiscal year that we're in now, we are planning to go back to your Board in January, February timeframe for a mid-year financial update. And at that time, we'll have revenue projections, which would include excess EREF and any plans to pay down our pension debt. So on Measure A, so Measure A is the half-cent, 10-year general sales tax that the voters of the county approved in November 2012. The Board has appropriated over $100 million in Measure A funds over the last two fiscal years, and we did present to your Board a process for the next two years of Measure A allocations earlier, or in November, November 4. On projections for Measure A, we are looking at $80 million a year, and the revenue ends in 2023. And we currently have reserves of $55 million, so this is unallocated Measure A funding. So for priority setting, we're looking at the next two fiscal years at $80 million a year that would be available in Measure A funds. So we did something a little different this year. We got feedback from our nonprofit partners, and we want to thank Thrive for helping us do that. We received over 100 responses from our nonprofit organizations. And then we also use SMC Speak Out. This is MindMixer, where we put out the question, "What should our priorities be for the next two years?", and received over 200 interactions. So we'll continue to use these tools and social media to get priorities from the community in the future. So all of this feedback, we've incorporated into the dashboard. So we did create... This is one of our performance dashboards, the Shared Vision 2025 dashboard. And I hope you've had an opportunity to at least check it out. We're also planning to meet with your individual offices to show you the dashboard so that you can explore the data and see all the neat trends that we have in there. So what we've incorporated into the dashboard are all of the feedback that we've gotten from departments and from community members. So on recommendations, these are organized by each community impact goal, so I will go through them briefly. It's all in the Board report. But under reducing crime, the indicators that we'll be using under that will be looking at violent crime, recidivism rates, residents reporting that they feel safe, and then substantiated child abuse referrals. So under this goal, we're looking at continuing our prevention early intervention strategies around reducing recidivism, ensuring school safety, reducing latency rates at our schools, addressing the needs of commercially sexually exploited children, and then also to identify ways that we could be more aggressive around intervening in mental health cases with partnerships with behavioral health and law enforcement. So the second goal is increasing life expectancy, and the indicators we're tracking there are life expectancy by race and ethnicity, also health coverage, so looking at subsidized healthcare coverage and how many residents we're providing health coverage for. Seventh-grade students that are meeting physical fitness standards. So those are the three indicators we're looking at tracking as we're putting together programs and services around increasing life expectancy. And in here, we'd include policies coming from health around sugar-loaded drinks and then promoting healthy transportation. And we're also looking at promoting physical fitness in our schools, since we have only 41% of our seventh-grade students in the county meet physical fitness standards, so we would want to make an impact in that area. And then we'd also look at the proximity of parks and open space near neighborhoods and schools as part of our priorities here. This next goal area is by far the biggest challenge here in the county. This is looking at improving affordability around housing and basic needs. We would be tracking Housing Affordability Index by city. We'll also be looking at employment in the county as well as poverty levels under this goal. So one important initiative under this area would be to explore the impacts of a living wage and rent control ordinances. We'd also be focusing more attention on vulnerable populations. That includes the formerly incarcerated, patients being discharged from our hospital, emancipating foster youth, veterans, immigrants, older adults, individuals with disabilities, and victims of violence. Those would be our high-priority populations. Under the goal of closing education achievement gaps, we would be tracking third-grade reading proficiency, as well as high-school graduation rates for this goal. And this has a lot to do with the Big Left Initiative, so to continue our commitment around Big Left, and also to expand summer learning opportunities in our libraries. On improving transit accessibility, we're tracking ridership and also the alternative commute trips in the county. And SAM Trans is one area here where we've provided Measure A funding to continue transportation options for older adults and individuals with disabilities, and we'll also be looking at ways to reduce congestion in the county, as well as county employees participating in alternatives. On increasing community engagement, the needles we're trying to move here are voter turnout and also visits to our libraries and our parks. And there's a lot here around libraries and then making sure that we're being responsive to the needs around infrastructure in the community, and also looking at ways to increase citizen participation in community decisions, and some of that using technology. In reducing greenhouse gas emissions, through the presentation before this item around energy, alternative energy sources, and reducing per capita emissions, we're also looking at reducing electric consumption and vehicle miles traveled. The focus here will be looking at preventing and preparing for climate change and then implementing our climate action plans in the county. Under the goal of conserving and protecting natural resources, we are tracking per capita water consumption, as well as air quality, per capita trash disposal, as well as acres of open space. And a number of the initiatives here are around conserving water, ensuring that there are potable water supplies available for long-term use in the county. And then on that last bullet point on trails, the number-one vote getter around SMC Speak Out on the ideas was to create this San Francisco Bay-to-Half-Moon Bay Greenway. So we've added that to the list to explore opportunities around that. And the last goal that we have is to be an open, responsive, and effective government. And we're looking to maintain our AAA credit rating, increase the number of views that we have on our data sets and our open data portal, and also to increase customer satisfaction in the county. So part of this will be to evaluate existing Measure A initiatives and recommending continuation for those that are making a significant impact in the community. This also has capital IT infrastructure, so we'll be bringing a separate package to your Board in March to take a look at capital IT infrastructure, continuing to pay down our unfunded pension liabilities, and then improving our capacity to use data to manage So on next steps, we do have two Measure A information sessions. So once we have priorities from your Board today, we have one tomorrow at Sobrato Community Center, and that's specifically for our nonprofit partners to answer any questions they might have about the process. And then also on December 6... And then also on December 16th, we'll have many of our department heads there to answer any questions around ideas that the community might have for Measure A proposals. And then on, actually it's February 10th, which is the first board meeting in February, we'll be bringing our mid-year financial report to your board. And then on March 17th and 31st, those will be separate presentations of Measure A proposals. So after we've gone through the review process of Measure A proposals, we'll present our recommendations to your board in March. And then the recommended budget will be submitted on June 1st with public hearings the week of June 22nd, and then final budget hearing on September 22nd. So that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Raina at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just was curious, that slide you had about the informational sessions, I'm wondering, would it be beneficial to have some additional information sessions and have them at different locations? Example might be East Palo Alto, you know, throughout the county as opposed to centralized?
Sure, through the President's, we can schedule additional information sessions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unless there's other questions, I think we can move to some speakers. We would have, again, time for, oh, maybe, we really need to adjourn at 1:15, so we could take 20 minutes of speakers, we could 10 or 12 speakers. So if I could ask, instead of just calling names randomly, if other, you know, for people who cannot stay and participate, beginning at 2:15 after we re-adjourn, so I'd like to take those people first, does anyone in that category? Don't be shy. Okay, why don't you just come forward, and you'll have to announce your name. Yeah. And yeah, the folks who need to speak now, if you could kind of come sit in the corner here behind the rostrum. And extending a standard two minutes, that'd be helpful for everyone who wants to speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malpe. I am Shawna O'Shaughnessy, Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Peninsula. And I want to talk about the priority of affordable housing. I know that you know I'm not exaggerating when I say we're in a crisis here in San Mateo County. Family at all income levels are struggling and feeling pinched by the lack of and high cost of housing here on the peninsula. I really appreciate that this board is committed to using all the tools in your arsenal and supporting both public and private efforts to create and preserve decent affordable housing here. And I urge you to continue to do so. There really isn't a single solution to the affordable housing crisis. From my vantage point, housing rehab, I know that by preserving affordable housing that we already have, we can protect the diversity that we value here in San Mateo County. It's a relatively cost-effective tool and has immediate results. We can keep low-income people safe and healthy in their own homes. We truly can help people age in place, we can support families who have inherited their homes, and we can support working families that are struggling to make it. According to census data, there are about 5,000 substandard owner-occupied homes here in San Mateo County. And so I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm grateful for your commitment to affordable housing, and thank you for your work on behalf of San Mateo County.
Thank you.
Before we do have the next speaker, I'd like to point out that Shawna is having to, is really kind of a victim of the fact that there is a lack of affordable housing, she's having to leave the area.
Oh, no.
Because she cannot afford to live here.
Oh, no.
In fact, that's why I'm jumping ahead, because I'm driving to Chico for kindergarten registration tomorrow morning, so thank you for letting me elbow my way in.
Yes, go ahead, and next.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Nancy Keegan. I'm the Program Director for Catholic Charities Adult Day Services in San Carlos. And I just wanted to talk about today what's missing in the priorities, which is, I'm here on behalf of older adults and adults with disabilities. That's a big gap that we have in our current funding priorities. Funding for this group in our county has remained the same or is less than what programs have received since, in 2012, specifically through Old American Act funds and funding through county general funds. Older adults, especially those that have cognitive and physical disabilities, are often forgotten, and their needs are high. They face so many challenges. Also, often overlooked are their family caregivers. Many of whom who work full-time jobs, maybe the spouses or the adult children of the people they're caring for, and are also caring for their own children and maybe their grandchildren. So I urge you to please consider the needs of older adults, adults with disabilities, and family caregivers in our priorities for Measure A funding. This funding can be an opportunity to support and expand existing services and to create new opportunities for the most vulnerable members in our community. Our, this population's growing. In 2011, the first of the baby boomers reached what used to be known as retirement age. And for the next 15 years, boomers will be turning 65 at a rate of 8,000 to 10,000 per day. In San Mateo County, we can expect to see a 72% increase in the number of older adults 65-plus living in the county by the year 2030. And this is all according to the County Health System website policy briefing, so I'm sure you're aware of all these numbers. But I just want to remind you, and the largest increase will occur in adults age 85, will have 148% more in 2030 than we do today. So this can be attributed to adults living longer. So in closing, I just want to urge you to consider the needs of older adults and adults with disabilities and their caregivers for Measure A funding. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Pine and board members. I'm Luisa Boada. I'm the CEO of Ravenswood Family Health Center in East Palo Alto. And as many of you are aware, we're, actually, we're now 13 years old. We serve over 12,000 residents in San Mateo County. The majority are from South San Mateo County, the communities with some of the lowest-income individuals. 97% of our patients have incomes below 200% of poverty and 86% below 100% of poverty, and 95% are from ethnic minorities. And we're currently in the process, as some of you know, we're building a new building. This is a $38 million project. We've raised all of the funding without needing funds from San Mateo County. We've raised other sources of funding. We currently, in our $21 million budget, leverage 20 million of that from other sources. The county provides about $1.7 million a year to us, which is only 8%. When we open our new building, we'll be able to double our number of patients to 24,000, who are adding pharmacy, radiology, optometry, podiatry, some specialty services, and mammography will be one of those that we're adding in imaging and ultrasound. These are services that will help people who live in our community be able to get care locally in one-stop shop. We believe that we are a good investment. We provide open access scheduling, and so our patients do not go to the ER. They don't get unnecessary hospitalizations because they can get into care when they need it. And so we believe we are a great investment, and we're hoping that for that new building, that you will help us in the next two-year cycle with Measure A funding to help us with the expansion of staff until we are able to bring in the volume and the revenues necessary to support that. So we will be hiring between 14 to 21 staff in the first year, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
Hi, Cliff Lenz, Brisbane City Council. I just want to thank the board supervisors for your commitment to those important issues that Measure A is trying to address, whether it's affordable housing or better transportation and improving education, helping folks with mental illness. The reason I'm here today is that, not on behalf of Brisbane, but the area of the Bay Shore area and Daly City. And as you know, I mean, San Mateo County is booming economically, but there are areas that are struggling. This area is one of those areas. They have a library, but it's only open 10 hours a week. And I know that, you know, through Measure A, there's that money for infrastructure of libraries, but I'm hoping that you guys can address expanding hours for libraries in needy areas. They also have two schools that need desperate repair. They're planning to close one and build a new school. And, you know, I would hope that there could be some Measure A money that would help school districts to improve the conditions of the existing schools. And then I just want to just second what Supervisor Slocum said in regards to having workshops in other parts of the county. Would love to have something up in the northern part of the county, so that it makes it easier for our communities to participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name's Christina Khan. I'm the Program Manager for High Cap San Mateo, as well as a Commissioner for Commission on Aging. I'm excited about the projects set forth with Measure A funding, especially about the increased life expectancy and reaching others with health insurance, including housing, as well as transportation. But as a High Cap Program Manager and overseeing 30 volunteers and helping at least 1,400 clients per year as a whole program, I hear of clients who are suffering and they're not listed on the priority list. They're middle-class, older adults who do not get any financial assistance with their Medicare costs, long-term care costs, or medications. They fall through our gap federally and state because they have too, because their income is too high, or they have assets that exceed the medical limit. As a resident of San Mateo County, as well as someone who has deep concerns for our future of our county and for older adults, I ask the board to look and to reevaluate the priority list, to make sure that our seniors who have paid taxes, who've worked in this county their whole life and raised their families, and have done everything right, that we somehow create a program that helps them with their needs, such as medications and long-term care costs and rent assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Mary Evans. I live in San Carlos, but I perform Medicare counseling for High Cap in East Palo Alto. And I just want to say that there are a number of residents in San Mateo County who cannot afford their medication. I work with them when I see them as clients to find company who is willing to give their medication for free. And as a country as well-off as we are, we should have everyone who can go to bed at night knowing that they don't have to decide between food, rent, and their housing and their medication. And so I do say, let's look at a program where if we need to, they can get their medication somehow without having to decide between food and medication. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, President Pine, board members. My name is George Smith. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I've been a resident of San Mateo County for over 51 years. I'm a life member of the Marine Corps League, the Veterans of Foreign War, the Vietnam Veterans of America. I belong to the American Legion, and I am President of the American Legion Riders in San Mateo. I would like to thank you for the monies that have been allocated for the veterans in our county. And I would also like to pass on some of the information that I've got from members that I've talked to, from veterans in the organizations I belong to. Some of the things that we would like to see done is to identify the 33,000 veterans that are in San Mateo County, and that's as of the 2010 census. I'm sure there's more since then. We'd like to see a central coordinated location established for veterans and their families, blue and gold star parents, so they can receive the information that they need and the benefits they deserve. We'd like to make sure that veteran service officers are ample for the number of veterans that we have. Currently, we have two in the county, and one of them is, I believe, on some type of medical leave. So we need to make sure that we have enough to provide the people with the resources that they need. We need to make sure that the funding for support veterans in school is year-round instead of just simply when the semester's, when they're in session. With the multiple deployments by all of our military today and the increase in PTSD and traumatic brain injury incidents, we need to make sure that these are funded. I thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Pine and board. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. My name is Dick Gregory. I've lived and practiced dentistry in this community for 30 years, and I've served as Director of the Samaritan House Dental Clinics, which provide free dental care for people with nowhere else to turn. I am also the past Chair of the San Mateo County Oral Health Coalition. I know from personal experience that the need for improving access to dental care for underserved populations in our county is acute. We are becoming increasingly aware that oral health is directly related to overall health, and that mouth infections are a risk factor common to chronic illnesses such as diabetes and heart disease. I'm here today to ask the board to amend the list of Measure A funding priority areas to include addressing the unmet dental access needs in San Mateo County. Some of you may know that the San Mateo County Health System published a community health needs assessment in 2013. This report made the need to address dental access issues very clear. I'd like to share a brief quote directly from one of the key findings. Quote, "Access to dental care is among the lowest of all types of access to healthcare service. No systematic effort to identify needs or plan for future needs exist in the county." Our two healthcare districts have also identified dental access issues as a top unmet healthcare need. To address that need and to fill gaps in dental care, they have funded a new dental access program that is working collaboratively with the San Mateo Medical Center, Ravenswood Family Health Center, the Samaritan House, and Sonrisus on the coast side, as well as the private practice community. The San Mateo County Board of Supervisors is in a unique position to partner with other community stakeholders to leverage Measure A funding to maximize the number of vulnerable individuals able to access dental care. Frail elders, disabled adults, children in Head Start programs, group home residents, and many others will benefit from such a collaboration at its full capability. In short, our county health system and our two healthcare districts have documented and made it a priority to address the unmet dental needs in San Mateo County. I respectfully request that this board add this as a Measure A funding priority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joshua Hug. Good afternoon, President Pine, members of the board. Housing first. It's the basis upon which the county embarked on a collaborative effort to end homelessness here. I think it's been almost 10 years in that effort. And that same spirit applies to people who are not homeless as well. It is, housing is the basis upon which health, prosperity, education, jobs, and so many other things in this county rely on the ability to have safe and stable housing. So it is in that spirit, in the spirit of the ounce of prevention equals a pound of cure, that we ask that the Affordable Housing Funding Plan that was put forward in October that outlined the county's commitment to supplying funding for new affordable housing, in addition to the initial effort that was done with the former RDA funds, that that effort be maintained. There is a $6 million commitment in fiscal year 15, 16. We would ask that the 16, 17 effort be maintained at the $6 million level. In that collaborative spirit, as you know, the county is partaking in the Grand Nexus Study to consider impact fees, commercial and housing impact Grand Nexus Study to consider impact fees, commercial and housing impact fees. By continuing that commitment, it serves as a bridge until these impact fees, once considered and some of them implemented, are able to accumulate funds, and we can successfully hand off to the—to this new source of income. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Again, the Board—I want to give people a chance to eat a sandwich before one-thirty. So why don't we go ahead and take—yeah, we're going to take Dwight. And is there anyone else who's just desperate to—because we do need to take a short break?
So I promise, thirty seconds. Dwight will submission hospice.
Take a minute.
We—twenty-nine seconds. So I represent an organization that is going to be building the first inpatient hospice house in San Mateo County. It is a program that has not existed anywhere in the county. It is a building that, once built, will take care of itself and be self-sustaining. And what we're hoping that in this priority list that you will have some funds that'll be available for these one-time shots that can help put the building in place so that we can serve people at the end of life as they should be served, other than hospitals, nursing homes, and other locations. And I would say that it is a project that will take about twenty million dollars, and we have raised five, and we hope to have this operational for the entire community. I will leave you with that the fastest age group growing in our county today is over eighty-five. Unfortunately, the biggest risk for them is they need hospice care. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
President Pine, my intent was only to apologize to you. Your believing that I wanted to make a remark during Measure A was correct. And so I—my previous remarks were only to support Housing Leadership Council's request.
We got—it, got it. Okay, so we're going to come back. We're going to—should be back by two-fifteen. It could be two-thirty. For those who can't join us, you know, we do video these meetings, so, you know, tomorrow you can go and look at the deliberations that will take place later this afternoon. Thank you very much. We're going to adjourn for now. Okay, good afternoon. We're reconvening. Thank you for your extraordinary patience. Today's been discombobulated. So we're going to, I think, pick up with public speakers, and I'm sure we've lost a number of people, but I know some are still—some—the audience would like to speak. So I don't—I don't see Kay Comfort Carr. She left—I think she left her statement with us. Is Claire Blanchard here? Okay.
Okay. I wrote this out. Sorry. Okay. I've lived in San Mateo County for fifty-five years, along with my parents, grandparents, and I graduated from Burlingame High School. This is my three children and my colleague, Misha Sky, right there. I'm speaking on this to let you know this is an intergenerational opinion and some thoughts that my family is having about Measure A and the funding directions of Measure A. I'm very proud of San Mateo County and the citizens for passing Measure A and taking on that additional expense to be sure that the services that we've invested in and believe in are substantial—continue, that we're able to support them and continue funding them. I work for Star Vista, and we're very much seeing a prediction come true of a cut in state and federal funding. Actually, several of our programs are really on the verge of being cut dramatically because of the funding cuts that are coming down our way. So I'm especially appreciative that you're opening the possibility of listening to the San Mateo County providers, the community providers, come up with proposals and direct proposals to you about possibilities for the use of Measure A. We have a lot of ideas. I work with some wonderfully remarkable providers that are creative, insightful, and work right on the street, really on the ground, with some of the—some of the most complex and needy clients that we've got. Housing is a big component, but it's not the only component. We've got early childhood that's impact—impacted, and we have co-occurring addiction and drug and alcohol concerns for adults as well as youth, that we really are hoping to bring some proposals forward. So thank you for this opportunity to—
Thank you.
That's perfect.
Well done. Very well done. Is Barbara—Is it Colt? Mark Moulton? Yeah, Mark Moulton. Let me see Mark.
President Pine and Board of Supervisors, I'm here representing the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust this afternoon. And as you know, we have a couple of programs, and in particular, the one that helps us make loans to developers of affordable housing is setting out to raise more money so that we can meet in partnership with those developers. What would be very helpful for us, as you look through your budget for the next couple of years, is in the first year or Fund Three Point Oh, you've—you've seen matching funds with the—with the folks at the Housing Authority. But in that Four Point Oh year, twenty-sixteen to seventeen, the Housing Authority funding goes away. And what I'd like to ask is that you help us maintain the pipeline from the county side of six million dollars or more, so that as we're working on other legislative ways to raise money locally, to meet the developers with opportunities, and as we're working at heart to raise money, to be part of the funding stack, that we have as much interest as possible by keeping the pipeline open and the funding available for those developers. We need the work that they do. We need the roofs. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mark. Is Carrie Redusco here? There she is. Hi, Carrie.
Good afternoon, President Pine, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Moultonby and Mr. Byers. I am here today on behalf of the Fatherhood Collaborative of San Mateo County, representing the Policy and Advocacy Advisory Board. And we would just like to encourage or respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors look at investing in fathers as a priority. When we look at the priority areas, a lot of them refer to prevention and early intervention in many different areas, reducing crime, youth, mental health services. And many studies do indicate the father's important role in several factors, including greater cognitive ability, higher educational investment, psychological well-being, and social behavior. Just two quick pieces of data. The U.S. Department of Education study found that highly-involved biological fathers had children who were forty-three percent more likely than other children to earn mostly As's and thirty-three percent less likely than other children to repeat a grade. And another study of school-aged children found that children with good relationships with their fathers were less likely to experience depression, to exhibit disruptive behavior, or to lie, and were more likely to exhibit pro-social behavior. Also, children who live with their fathers are more likely to have good physical and emotional health, to achieve academically, avoid drugs, violence, and delinquent behavior. So we do ask that you encourage community organizations and county departments to bring forward proposals that include a role for the father. And something else we've also recognized is that there is a lack of data around fathers and services that are available for fathers. So thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Baker—Trini? From—okay. And Tippi Irwin?
Good afternoon to all you honorable members of the Board. My name is Tippi Irwin. I'm the Director of Ombudsman Services in San Mateo County. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak today, and I also want to thank each of you for your leadership and for promoting and implementing Measure A. I've always said that I live in an extraordinary community with extraordinary people, and I think this is just another example of that. I've passed out for each of you today a graphic of the state of our aging programs—programs in the state. It was put out by Congress of California Seniors. When I found—I—when I first saw it, I was totally shocked at what I was looking at, as it speaks so very clearly of what has happened to aging programs in our state. We have an administration in place that is not receptive to the senior population and is showing no signs of restoring any or any part of the cuts that have been made. Though I speak only for myself, I suspect that in fact I speak also for all those who are running aging programs. We are struggling to meet the basic needs of our clients. I'm asking that the Board of Supervisors take this into consideration as they begin to prioritize what they will or will not fund with Measure A money that is available. Regarding Ombudsman Services, I want to refer to the debacle that occurred in an assisted-living facility in Castro Valley in Alameda County just over a year ago. I'm sure most of you read about it in the newspaper. At that time, we saw the abandonment of nineteen extremely vulnerable—frail and vulnerable seniors in a facility, a clear indication of what can happen when a system fails so completely. Shortly after this complete system failure, the Deputy Director of Department of Social Services met with all the ombudsman program coordinators in Sacramento and told us what a good job he had done, and what—the good job he and his staff had done, and I'm quoting him, "It is not our responsibility to pass out pills." He seemed to fail to realize that his responsibility was health and safety of the residents he was serving. We are clearly part of the safety net for this very frail and vulnerable clientele, and I'm asking that you open your minds and your hearts to the possibility of helping us, not only my program, but all aging programs, to put back some of the services that have been so sadly cut over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Fox. And we'll have Andrew Gerthet—if Andrew's here? After Martin Fox, yeah.
Thank you again, President Pine, members of the Board, and my fellow veterans for your service to the county. It is my understanding that this public hearing is to begin discussing—filling in critical service gaps that will provide critical services to the most vulnerable and underserved members of our community. I believe that a person who is so mentally ill they cannot voluntarily seek the treatment they need are among the most vulnerable and the most underserved members of the community. While the intellectually and morally bankrupt health systems, policies, and procedures claim to do whatever it takes to help, on one hand, the reality is that persons living with serious mental illness who are so sick they cannot seek treatment voluntarily do not receive the treatment they need to recover until they become a threat to themselves, others, or are gravely disabled. On the bottom of page two of the county manager's December second memorandum, he indicates that he is submitting, quote, "identifying ways to more aggressively intervene in mental health cases," closed quote, "to reduce crime for the Board's consideration." I believe this is another opportunity to reflect on the health system's use of law enforcement as the exclusive gatekeeper to the mental health care system and the United States Department of Justice's endorsement of assisted outpatient treatment as an effective and efficient recidivism reduction program in March of two thousand and twelve. The point is that by requiring a person who lives with serious mental illness to become a threat to themselves or others or gravely disabled, a service gap is created, which can only be filled by prevention and early intervention effort to avert a crisis from taking pace, without regard for one's personal preferences. Please bring an end to this immoral and inhumane health systems, policies, and procedures which require a person living with mental illness to get worse before they can get better, and vote to implement Laura's Law now. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew Gerthet?
Good afternoon, Honorable Supervisors. My name is Andrew Gerthet. I'm the Director of the San Mateo County Law Library directly across the street, and I am here today to ask for your support with Measure A funding in transforming the library into a meaningful legal resource for the general public of San Mateo County. Currently, over half of the patrons using the law libraries are members of the general public who represent themselves in court without an attorney. Yet, the law library is a print-based legal research center that is geared largely towards the attorneys. I would like to transform the library into the premier legal help center of San Mateo County for the general public. Specifically, I would like to offer regular once-a-week lectures on various legal topics of importance to the general public, regular workshops and hands-on training seminars on legal topics, as well as other important topics as computer and job skill training, which I'm seeing a lot of need over there. Importantly, I'd like to offer regular one-on-one attorney assistance for pro-per patrons, and this would require me to hire staff attorneys to work at the law library. I'd also like to either hire or train staff members to be fluent in Spanish, as well as purchase more Spanish-language legal materials, both electronically and in print, as well as train staff in mental health issues and effective engagement techniques for the mentally ill patrons that we service quite a bit. Importantly also, I'd like to have a sufficient number of public computer terminals with access to robust electronic legal resource services such as Westlaw and Lexis. Currently, we only have five. A robust website offering access to online legal assistance via chat, video services, and other electronic platforms to help the general public who cannot come to Redwood City. Suitable public meeting and training spaces in the library. And then lastly, a small branch help center is located in the North County area, as well as along the coast, to again meet the legal resources—or legal research needs of citizens living in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, if he's still here, is Stacy Hover. Yeah, there's Stacy.
Good afternoon, President Pine, members of the Board. I wanted to highlight one group of vulnerable citizens that was mentioned by Deputy Manager Faralis in her original presentation, and that's immigrants. Two groups in particular. First, the Office of Refugee Resettlement has placed a couple of hundred unaccompanied minors in Central—from—who fled violence in Central America with their relatives here in San Mateo County. All these children face fast-track deportation proceedings in Immigration Court in San Francisco. Although many of them are eligible for some form of immigration relief, the vast majority will be deported without legal representation. The other group that I wanted to mention are the estimated twenty-one thousand San Mateo County residents who will qualify for deferred action under the President's recently announced expansion of those programs. These people are either childhood arrivals, an expansion of the childhood arrival program, or they are parents of U.S. citizen or legal permanent resident children. Again, many of these folks are going to be eligible for some kind of relief, and this relief will provide work authorization for them, which is one of the most effective ways of stabilizing a family and alleviating poverty as well. So the immigrant community—or services community—is stepping up to meet this challenge, and with—we are receiving assistance from the philanthropic community, and we would like to ask the county as well to play a part in this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Again, we appreciate your credible patience. Yes, of course. Okay, Mr. Sky?
Yeah. Hello, I'm Misha Sky. I'm the Program Director at Fred Finch Youth Center, but I want to talk on behalf of the Contractors Association. These are the mental health and AOD providers that are partnered with BHRS in providing mental health and AOD services to the county. And just to be considered with this opportunity of Measure A money of how some of these programs can be enhanced, rebuilt, or expanded. I'm looking forward to the process of some of the workshops and hope something good comes of this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And did we get everyone? Okay. So we've heard from the staff, and we've heard from numerous speakers. I guess this is a time for the Board to share some thoughts. A lot of different ideas have been put forward today. Not an easy thing to think through with so many things that one could fund. So anyone want to start? So, anyone want to start?
I guess I have a question. I mean, we've covered in the recommendation of the Shared Vision 2025 and the priorities and all, and you've sort of listed a lot of the different areas. Are you looking for more specificity under those items? Or, because I could see on some of these, like, I'll just take the first one, reduce crime. You know, there's a couple of things I'd like to see happen or continue to happen, like the gun takeback in the homes for domestic violence individuals. Is that something, do you want that level of specificity today?
Yeah, if you can highlight specific program areas or even programs that you think really should be considered in the budget or through Measure A, that would be very, very helpful.
I'll mention them. Some of them I don't know. They may still have funding, they may not. I'm not absolutely sure. So, I'm just going to throw, maybe I'll just start and throw a couple of things out. The other area, we talked about increased community engagement. One of the areas that I think I'd like to see us do more of is, and it's really a little different than, I think, the community engagement you're talking about here, is in the area of law enforcement with more community policing outreach and more maybe school resource officers. Just look at that area. The reason I say that is these incidents that have happened around the country have really blown up communities. I think we've done a much better job in just using the incident in Hafn Bay because we have a presence there. And I think it would be nice to continue that engagement with the community in a lot of the different areas if we don't already have it staffed appropriately. Another area, a gentleman just got up and spoke about it, the contractors in drug and alcohol. My understanding is there's been a waitlist for people trying to get into some of these beds, yet there are some beds there. And I'd just like to see if there's that gap in service there with beds that we could utilize if we could afford, you know, put some dollars to that. A couple of things that were mentioned in increased life expectancy, or this can even be under health. We talked about promoting physical fitness, and we talked about the sugar in the sodas and stuff. I think just one statement of just promoting healthy eating habits, whether it's in our schools, whether it's in our hospitals, our jails, whatever, just continue to promote those. We also heard today gaps in services in our senior services. I think we do actually a very good job with our senior services, but I would like us to take a look at, are there some specific areas where we really need, whether it's long-term care? We know some of them, but just see if we can find what those real gaps might be. I'd also like us to continue, we talked about summer learning. I'd like us to continue to really take a hard look at our libraries, and we'll kind of support their providing for our students and children in all the different schools. So, if anything needs to be enhanced, especially the summer learning or the after-school learning, that would be an area that I'd like to see. Under transit accessibility, the last two years we gave dollars towards Ready Wheels. I'd like us to take another look, because I think our numbers are going up. And if that's an area where we can continue to support, I would be in favor of that. That's a start. I know I have lots of different notes. But I'll start with that as a couple of the areas that I think I'd like to look at. Let me just take one. Okay. The other one we talked about, we've talked about, but we haven't really delved into it, was the whole issue around living wage. Explore those opportunities for the future, but I'm just going to need a lot of study as to how that can go over. Let me just see. Okay. Yeah, I'm going to stop there. Those are some of the main ones I'd like to look at.
Thanks. I'm wondering, Mr. Malby, in the interest of time, is it possible to submit our lists in writing and maybe just take a moment here for a couple of the higher-level items?
Absolutely. In fact, Supervisor Horstley, remember the old Encyclopedia Britannica? They're being delivered to my office from his office right now on his ideas.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I never miss a trick.
I wanted to, under the category perhaps of reducing crime, is to add an item which we might just, for the moment, call youth intervention. Youth intervention being looking at programs that exist throughout the county. The ones that I'm most familiar with would be Street Code Academy in East Palo Alto, which basically teaches young people coding, prepares them for jobs in high tech. The MAP program. And then across the freeway here, there's the Limo Foundation, which takes young people from East Palo Alto and Bell Haven and really gets them on a track to college. And actually, I think their graduation rate is 100%. So, these are all important youth sort of programs that support, I think, in the longer run, crime reduction and, you know, keeping kids off the street. The other thing, of course, is I'd like to continue our work in North Fair Oaks and actually thinking about the idea of a consulting firm, perhaps, that can do some additional work on the parking front. For instance, there are some businesses in North Fair Oaks that have parking in the back of their businesses. And when we shrink the street from four lanes to three lanes, we lose 42% of the parking. But in back of some of those businesses, there are parking lots. And in between the parking lots, there are fences. And what if, like in San Carlos, we sort of worked with the business community, took down those fences, created alleyways, and thereby increased the inventory of parking in North Fair Oaks? Not on the street, but behind some of those buildings and some of those blocks. Like to look into that as part of the parking solution there. I support Supervisor Tissia's idea of the community policing and the situations that have gone on across the country. And I do agree that one of the reasons, one of the things that separates us from what happened in Ferguson, for an example, is that idea of community policing and getting the sheriff out with the kids, with the people. So, I would support that idea. And of course, I'm going to have a list here, but veterans and homelessness and housing and those things. But at a very high level, I think the county has done a really commendable job at the Vision 2025. I have looked at the websites and gone through some of the data, and I'm really impressed with how, from where we were a few years ago to where we are today. But I think maybe it's time to look at, explore taking that to the next level of measurement and data, which might be things like SPI, the social progress indicator that I mentioned to Reina earlier. And really, just looking at our data and our program to see how we might get that to the next level. And I do have some ideas on that that I'm willing to talk with you all about. But I also think that there, you know, we've all heard of this, the income gap and the gap between the haves and the have-nots. And I really like us to look at policies that sort of get to the idea of inclusive growth. That is, not growth just for the top 1% or 2%, but really creating strategies with some of this money to create pathways. And some of it's here, it just maybe could be enhanced, but pathways perhaps out of poverty. And there are a lot of ideas around that. But it's the whole idea of inclusive growth, growth for everybody, and the notion of, what's the saying? All boats, whatever. Rising tide lifts all boats. Well, we all know that's not necessarily happening here in San Mateo County. And I think there are strategies we can look at that get to some of that. So, with that, I'll stop. And actually, I want to say one more thing. Sorry. I would, to the speaker who talked about immigrants, I would like us to explore the idea of creating an Office of Immigrant Affairs. Santa Clara has one, San Francisco has one. San Mateo County, I think there's, I have data here on the immigrant populations and how big it is and what the needs are. And perhaps that's something we could look at. I don't know if it would be in Human Services or where, but I think that there needs to be a centralized place to address some of the needs of our quite sizable immigrant population. And with that, I'll stop there.
I'd like to, oops, I'm having a tough time today. That's the third cup of water I have spilled. I'm going to set the whole place on fire in a second here. I'd like to keep it at prevention and at risk and all categories that we've talked about today, whether it's seniors, children, vets, immigrants. But we've done a good job on prevention, and I think we can do better. I think we can do more. We've done a pretty good job with at-risk populations. But, you know, we have PAL programs throughout the county that really, oh, thank you, Adrian, thank you very much, that do a super job with diverting kids. The library, so this past summer, we did the reading boot camp where we took at-risk kids, and they had eight weeks of intensive reading and discussing of the things they had done. Parks, you know, we're not a recreation department. We're a park department, but we can certainly get at-risk kids out on the trails and get them, you know, organize them so that they see what it's like in the outdoors. And the same with seniors. At-risk seniors, get them out of their houses wherever we can, enhance maybe existing senior program. But so, those are the two topics, the two overarching for me, prevention programs and prevention for at-risk.
Thank you, President Pine. I just, a couple, well, actually, more than a couple. And what, under the health and safety, where it says residents report feeling safe, I'm going to suggest that, to the effect, I think I gave you this on the memo, we add like an emergency response radio, especially in the South Coast between Pescadero always to La Honda. We know that they are really vulnerable to flooding and tsunami. And actually, the whole coast is. In any case, this may be something that should come out of the OES. I know we spend millions of dollars every year for equipment for OES, most of which seems to be sitting under their garage. So, but this is something that could be utilized. And I think it also has some additional utilization, especially, you know, it could be something that we use for some of our teens, to get them involved in something other than things that they currently involved in. Under substantiated child abuse referrals, and it's, the quote here says, "Address the complex needs of commercially sexually exploited children." Of course, this is under a law enforcement area, but I think we ought to also talk about transitional housing and wraparound services for those kids. On health coverage, I think we've talked about this before. Also, there should be a bullet point for isolated rural South Coast communities, especially for farm workers. And that may actually fit in with, I would certainly like to work with you on that issue of the immigrants, because most of them are immigrants, and they cannot go back home. And they do not go back home. They bring their families here. Under children's physical fitness, when it talks about healthy choices and healthy transportation, I'd like us to add into their safe routes to schools. Under prosperous community, and it talks about provide supportive housing for older foster youth, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to be more of a follow-up on that. I know that there are, San Francisco houses a significant number. And I've been talking with HSA, they think that most of those foster children who graduate from foster care actually are in that program. What I hear anecdotally is that's not exactly accurate, that there are a lot of foster kids who fall through the cracks, who end up as homeless, end up in jail, end up in other kinds of circumstances. And I'd like to do a follow-up and see if there are the things that we can do for some follow-up. Of course, when it comes to Affordable Housing Fund, I am supportive of maintenance of the, of that Affordable Housing Fund. I think one of the things that it does for us is that, you know, one of the few counties, other than maybe San Francisco, one of the few counties that really has an Affordable Housing Fund, and nonprofit builders know it. And so, we are really poised to really benefit from a lot of these nonprofit organizations like Bridge Housing, Mid-Peninsula Housing. And those are the people who are going to build housing for our clients. They're the ones who are going to deal with the senior citizens, for people coming out of jail, for people with mental health issues, et cetera. But I think one of the things in our housing department, I think they are pretty much understaffed. I would ask you to take a look at their staffing. If we are going to do more for housing, I think there has to be some capacity building at Department of Housing. And of course, I think that that capacity building probably also goes to supporting some of our affordable housing nonprofits. Under poverty, again, when it says assess safety net needs in the county, one of the things on the coast side, we've got 5% of the population, 11% of the unsheltered homeless. And so, you know, we do need to have a shelter for, especially for families on the coast side. And the difference is that for an individual, I can always probably get an individual to come over to El Camino somewhere for housing. But for families, they can't. And the reason for that is the kids are in school. And so, they end up living in a car, they end up living in a motorhome behind the Safeway or behind some, or in some encampment there. So, we need to have something over on the coast side for the homeless or the people who are at risk of being homeless. Under high school graduations, it talks about reducing truancy and improved school attendance. I'm not really sure our responsibility there is pretty unclear, because there are 23 school districts. I would assume that they have major responsibility for that. The one exception for that, you know, I have no objection to helping school districts, but the one exception is foster youth. Nobody else is responsible for them but us. And so, I think we need to really emphasize when we talk about truancy and school attendance and high school graduation, really have to focus on the kids that are ours, that are those foster kids, and perhaps also the kids at the YSC as well. They, we, I know the Office of Education provides classes for them, but I think that's essentially, they are ours, and so, we're responsible for them. When it talks about increased community engagement, I really like what Supervisor Warren has done, Slocum, has done in North Fair Oaks. And I would, you know, really encourage us to do a Pescadero community engagement. You know, and the other, it's one of the things that we know, we talked about voter turnout. We know that in certain communities, the voter turnout is abysmal. And I suspect that one of the things that we could do to build up that engagement and voter turnout is to do a much more vigorous job of registering voters. And I know Supervisor Grum and I, where we worked on that last issue about district boundaries, one of the things that we saw is that some areas, there is a, the number of registered voters, the people who could be registered is fairly significant, the number of people who actually register and the people who actually vote is actually dismal. And so, I think there should be some resources put into engaging our communities of color, for example, and to get more people to actually be, you know, to actually participate in the voting process. When it comes to visiting all county parks, you know that I have a great deal of support for our parks. That's one of my priorities. Down here, where it talks about environmentally conscious community, it says prevent climate change, we're not going to prevent climate change. I wish we could, we can't. I think it's an adapt. And I think the same thing with prevent sea level. I don't know of anybody who can hold back the Pacific Ocean. I think the best that we could do is adapt. And I know Supervisor Pine has taken a great deal of interest in this and talks about, some of the experts that he's brought, talk about a sea level rise of three feet. So, we're going to have to adapt to sea level rise. One of the things I'd like to see us do with our county office buildings that are being built in the future, maybe even renovated, is have a policy of zero net energy for new construction. And maybe even for, you know, when we reconstruct, what is it, 455 as well? When it talks to conserve and protect natural resources and talking about water, I support the use of recycled water. And actually, we probably would also want to work with the state on changing some of the building codes regarding gray water. You know, I hear some of the communities that I serve are fairly high-use because they have lots of vegetation. But they'd like to be able to use gray water, but they really are precluded from doing that. You know, when it talks about ensuring all areas of the county have long-term access to adequate potable water supplies, I don't think we're talking about SFPUC, I assume, nor are we talking about Cal Water. Really talk, the only agencies that I know that we run are CSA 7, CSA 11. And we did talk about, put some money into the budget last time about things like low-flow toilets and showerheads and things of that sort. And I don't know, I get asked from my constituents about where are those funds available? The other thing is that, although I did see, I was looking on our website, I do know that we are now subsidizing rain barrels, which I think is great. That's a step in the right direction. On open, when it talks about open space, I'm going to say, take a pitch for agriculture. I think small amounts of money in agriculture can make I think small amounts of money in agriculture can make a huge difference. And of course, you know, in terms of agriculture is an economic driver on the coast side. It is certainly related to health, protection of our natural resources and to our agricultural heritage as well. And when, another thing about proactively protecting our open space, there are lots of invasive species in open space. Now, I know we're dealing something with on parks. For example, on the Devil's Slide Park, we are taking care of pampas grass. But we have a lot of county-owned lands, not necessarily in the park, that is full of things like pampas grass as well as eucalyptus trees. And eucalyptus trees soak up a lot of water. They take a lot of water. They actually drain the, an aquifer. So I, I'd like to see us on county-owned land, and there are areas that we have that are, the pampas grass is so thick, it's embarrassing. And, and we, we need to have, speed up our planning department on a tree ordinance so we can remove, I'm not going to remove all the eucalyptus. I know some of them become habitat for bird, but a lot of them are like a noxious weed. Going down to open and responsive and effective government, and Supervisor Slocum and I can both relate to this, has to do with succession planning. You know, we've done this in the past with succession planning. And I remember when, when I was a sheriff, when Warren was the assessor, there was lots of succession planning. And all of a sudden, everyone left from the top, all the top management. And, and we did, we were able to replace people with really fine people. And in some cases, we brought people back. But I think it really is helpful to develop our own managers in-house, especially because of the cost of living in San Mateo County, that, you know, it's really tough to bring people from outside. I know even when I was on a healthcare district, one of our hospitals wanted to bring in an orthopedic surgeon and they guaranteeing him an income of $350,000 a year. And he looked at what he could buy in San Mateo County. He didn't take the job and he stayed in North Carolina. So even people that, we don't, we don't pay that kind of money, of course, but, so I think succession planning is in fact something we should do. And last but not least, so my colleagues speak left and right, my last one is that, how really do we get engagement of our citizens beyond those who are already engaged? And, you know, I know a good example is, is North Fair Oaks Forward. We're going, in our case, is Plan Princeton. We've had, the people who don't normally come out, we've had 200 people in public meetings. So somehow, you know, we do a fabulous job. Our citizens need to know that somehow we have to figure out a better way of communicating with those people, kind of the silent majority, and letting them know about the programs that are available to us. And with that, I have given you a detailed list, so thank you very much.
Yeah, that's all you got?
There was a Cliff Notes.
Thank you.
But the remaining 99 cents, these are my priorities. You know, I think just some, some high-level comments. You know, I think the really hard thing here is how do you, how do you prioritize, obviously? Because we've heard so many speakers with compelling projects and each member of the board has many good ideas, some, many of them overlap. And, you know, I don't, you know, the shared vision 2025, I think has been a good tool to measure, measure, you know, our results in certain areas, although many of them are outside our direct control. I don't think it's that helpful in helping us, you know, set those priorities. I mean, we should think about whether we need to agendize between now and, you know, sometime in January or some point in time earlier in the process where we can somehow, you know, try to talk about priorities. Like, I mean, I think Cheryl was on to something where, you know, the, it has to be some, you have, we, as a board, you have to identify certain themes. Like if it's, we have to have certain lenses to kind of measure these things through. So I don't, I don't really have the answer, but I'm just fearful that we're, it's not real helpful necessarily for, for you to, to hear 100 ideas. Somehow, we got to figure out a way to prioritize. Another issue that was brought up early on that I think is, needs an immediate focus is on these workshops, which are important for the CBOs. There was some suggestion that maybe there'd be one in the North County. I think that's probably a good idea, but if, you know, I think we should, should make that happen. So, you know, getting back through some of these lenses for evaluating programs, you know, last time around, we, we put forward some that I think are very helpful. You know, one is that consistent with the needs identified in Measure A. You know, we did, we did itemize many things. You know, the one, the idea that we can leverage our funds with other people's money is one that, for me, is an important lens. And then again, the idea of kind of taking care of our house, you know, repairing our county infrastructure, improving the efficiency of our operations. You know, does planning need an injection? I mean, basically, you know, make, the thing is, our core responsibilities are very important. I, I feel that has to be a big priority. And then, and then finally, I think every proposal, it'll be very hard to select amongst these proposals. So another thing that I would like, you know, is metrics. And somehow, hopefully, we can measure some of these. So those are kind of my big level points. You know, in terms of just substantive areas, I mean, I, I just try to do this quickly. You know, as everyone knows, you know, children and youth is a big priority of mine and we're doing some good work there, you know, the Big Lift, you know, I think we need to reinvest. And the libraries, obesity programs. You know, one that, again, maybe it's not for now, but a very interesting community schools, I'm thinking about that. And the issue of the unaccompanied minors, you know, I was really struck by what they did in San Francisco. I bet we could get the, you know, I'll have to talk to legal aid about this is, again, if we're going to give some money, it's got to get leveraged. We're going to need some of these big, you know, we've got some very well-paid lawyers in this county. They ought to put up some money or put in some time. Homelessness is, you know, really a big moral responsibility of ours. I'm very excited by the progress of the hot teens. And I, I think we may need another hot teen over, over on the coast. It's been, it's been one of the only things that's moved the needle in South City. So that's, that's good. You know, I think we all share a passion for parks. You know, I kind of carved out, you know, putting more and more of my time in this, in this climate change sector and, you know, I'm so pleased that we have the Office of Sustainability. And I know there's some internal discussion about how that looks going forward. And of course, you know, if we, if we think this community choice aggregation makes sense, you know, that may, that may require some bridge funding. You know, I mentioned before the importance of, you know, our county infrastructure, our county capital. And IT, I mean, my instinct is we're just not there. It's hard for me to know, but I just don't feel comfortable about, about the IT. I just have a couple of quick points. You know, I'm very intrigued by some of the ideas that have been circulated on dental needs. Clearly, there's a lot of community interest in that and it's something I want to learn more about. On housing, you know, boy, it's such a hard one. Now, I like the idea, you know, in our past program, we put a focus on housing our clients, which I think is important. Like, I think of like the mental health facilities and kind of the sad state of affairs of some of the places we have to put our, our mentally ill clients at the industrial hotel in South City. You're not going to change that overnight, but, you know, I, I've kind of come to see that, that's, again, that's our core obligation. And beyond that, leveraging money again, I mean, the cities are going to, you know, we can't do this all by ourselves. Cities need to participate, you know. Heart needs to participate. We, we, you know, we've done a lot. We should do more, but other people need to step up. Rehab's better than new. Home loan programs, I've mentioned, are interesting. And then again, this is probably plenty for now. So I guess, I guess, I guess the question I would put to all of us is, you know, how, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to set priorities? You know, maybe, you know, maybe in that second, last meeting in January or, you know, maybe you could come back with some questions or, you're going to see a lot of applications. And what then? Because I, because again, I don't think, you know, you're hearing us say, okay, county manager, here are the three areas which we really think are important. You're not hearing that today.
I think maybe what we could do in January, beginning of February, is sort of summarize the categories of proposals we're starting to see in some of these broad categories. And, and then bring that back with a discussion of the types of things you've talked about today and see, see where the overlap is and continue that discussion from there without getting program-specific at that point, but getting policy-specific.
Yeah, somehow we, it's hard. I mean, it's hard, but somehow we have to kind of try to step away from the program.
Right.
And to the extent we could give you a little more feedback before you make that initial cut. You know, I don't think you're going to give us every, I don't necessarily want to see every application that comes in.
Right.
It could be an awful lot of them.
President Pine, I'd like to add that, that when, I don't, I have a January calendar, thanks to HIP. When, when are our January meetings? Is, are they this 13th?
The swearing in and then there's...
The 6th is one meeting, but then 13 and 27?
Yeah.
13th, 27th is correct.
And I would, I would like to suggest that maybe we have an afternoon session.
Yeah.
And on either the 13th or the 27th.
27th would probably be better.
27th?
Yeah, LLI is coming in on the 9th.
Huh?
The letters of interest come in by the 9th.
Then we could map our calendars out a month in advance so we would know not to book that Tuesday afternoon.
That's a good idea.
And then just devote that to conversation and prioritizing and questions and kind of, you know, maybe come up with five categories or something.
Giving a little more guidance, yeah.
That'd be great.
Would you like that?
Yes, sure.
I also think it'd be helpful, you know, we're talking about a lot of different program areas. And I think it'd also be helpful as you, I mean, if we submit a lot of things to you, some we've said today and some will submit. If the department heads could take a look at some of those too as to the gaps in services. In other words, I don't want to add more that isn't necessary. And if there is a gap in service, but if it isn't really something we do, if it isn't a service we should be providing, then we should put that aside. As you say, you were talking about the schools, you know, the foster youth are our obligation. At some point, we got to make sure we take care of our obligation. And then some of these other things that are good things to do, but maybe not our obligation, we could see if, if there may be some additional money that's there or not.
Right. And remember too, that, that as naturally I would expect, that your discussion is sort of focused on Measure A today. But really, the intent was to make this a county-wide budget priority. So there may well be things, and I think President Pine and Supervisor Groom spoke very well to the lens issue, that kind of fit a Measure A lens. But we might say, you know, that's not quite Measure A, but it's darn important that we ought to be considering this in the budget. And so there would be another separate source of funds for something like that. So that's the other kind of thing that maybe we could begin those discussions in January too. This kind of feels like Measure A. This kind of feels like a general budget proposal.
I also think the other part that'll be helpful in these workshops, and I want to thank Thrive for helping to organize those and facilitate them, is the CBOs know a lot of the gaps. A lot of the CBOs I've talked to over time say, you know, we have a waiting list of 50 people for beds for drug and alcohol. One came in about childcare. We have a waiting list for childcare in the underserved areas. You know, that's some of the information I'd also want to know that we may not know unless they tell us.
Right.
So that's where I think these, these different meetings that you're going to have, we may hear more from the CBOs that may clarify or give us a different lens as well.
Right. And then those ideas also, I think, will be fleshed out in the conversations between departments and CBOs as these proposals begin to be vetted through the department so that I think we will have a, a pretty good understanding of where those gaps might well exist and how best to meet them.
Other comments? Okay, seeing as we do have another item or two on the agenda, if I remember.
Oh, God.
I lost my agenda.
Here's an extra one if you need one.
If I could. Mr. Porter is, knows what's next. Oh, that's right. That is the issues concerning the local streets and roads.
This is the long-awaited local streets and roads report that we've all been waiting for.
Yeah, that's it.
It was fascinating reading.
Good job, Rick.
All right. President Fine, members of the board, Mr. Malpey and Mr. Byers, it's my pleasure to bring you the annual road report update. This is a statewide assessment that's been taken on by a partnership of the County Engineers Association of California, along with the League of Cities, to try to get an assessment of what the, what the state of our roadway systems are in California and what funding is necessary to keep the roadway system in the condition it's at today or what might be necessary to bring it up to a good condition. So I'm going to go through this presentation. This update is the third update since this report was initially done in 2009. And as you can imagine, it's pretty difficult to get information on roadway conditions from nearly 500 cities and 58 counties. But the participation rate in this study is close to 98%. So we're getting a very good, a very good feel for what our roads look like. And we're starting to see what the trends are. And unfortunately, the trends are not, are not hopeful at this point. So what we want to make sure that we do is to let your board know what the impact of the current funding situation is for transportation and some options or some ideas that moving forward might be for your consideration and for the state's consideration in getting some additional funding towards transportation. Now, as you can see, the bulk of the roads that we drive on are local roads. I mean, when you think about it, you wake up in the morning, you get in your car and you drive to work. And you do that on a city street. And if you live in the uncorporated county, you're on our streets. Then you get onto a state highway, probably. You're probably on 101 to get here or 280. And that's how you get here. All your trips, especially your local shopping trips, are all on local roads. So it's important that we keep these in good shape. The way that we measure the condition of roads is by what's called a pavement condition index. And we go out on a, essentially, every three-year basis and survey all the roads in the county maintained system. And we get a PCI number for the roads within our system. But each street itself has its own PCI number. And that's how we prioritize street resurfacing. We go out and we do these surveys and we look at what roads are in the best condition for, say, a slurry seal or a chip seal, what roads need an overlay, and what roads are in such poor condition they need reconstruction, such as Loyola that we talked about this morning. So in 2008, the statewide road system had a PCI of 68, which is at risk. Since then, in 2014, we're now down to 66. So we're trending on the low side. So this is an idea of what a road with a PCI of 66 looks like. It's kind of getting old. When it gets gray like that, what that means is the emulsion, the oil in the asphalt is starting to, to leave. It essentially evaporates over time and you get that rougher ride. That's up in the San Mateo Highlands. So why is this important? The reason is, if you let your roads deteriorate to a condition that's less than 50, it gets significantly more expensive to repair these roads. The green areas, the treatments for $2 to $4 a square yard, that's your slurry seals and your chip seals. We can go out and do a lot of work for that kind of money. When you get into the $15 to $20 per square yard area, you're starting to look at overlays. When you get down to the 50 to the 25, you're looking at big digouts with overlays. And when you get below 25, you're, you're reconstructing the whole street. So you can see it costs you about, you know, on average, 25 times more to reconstruct than it does to maintain a very, a street with a PCI over 70. That's why this is important. So looking at the state, since 2008, we've seen the system statewide deteriorate. Green is good, red is bad, and blue is kind of in the middle. And you can see California's gone to some greens and, and a lot of blues into mostly blue now. So we're in a position now where we're getting to that point where we need to inject some additional funding into transportation in California. In San Mateo County, we've been fortunate. We've had a PCI of about 68 for the last three years. And the reason for that is the aggressive chip seal program that's been done by our roads division. Joe Lacoco, our deputy director of roads, he's been spearheading that chip seal. Joe's a good guy. You know, Joe's a good, he's a good road manager. We also were fortunate to get Prop 1B money. I believe it was in 2010 timeframe when Prop B was passed. The county received about $17 million worth of money from Prop 1B. And we used that towards our pavement segments. And that really helped us to maintain. But even with that large injection of money, we were still holding flat for the last three years. So you can tell that if we continue with our current funding levels, we'll probably see that PCI decline. This will give you an idea of what PCIs look like. This is a brand-new street. This is in West Menlo Park. We just reconstructed that last summer, Valparaiso. So that's a brand-new street. That's a great example of what the minimum road standards are. In that case, you've got a 22-foot wide street with three-foot valley gutters. That's what we built as a minimum road standard. This is an example of a PCI of 60. You can see the, the long cracks in that road. That is a problem.
My district was the last one, the good one.
That's a problem because when water gets in those cracks, it gets into the subgrade and that's how you get potholes. It essentially deteriorates your structural section. This is a street that's right about in the reconstruction range. We could probably overlay it with a bunch of dig... a bunch of digout, but that's a PCI of 40 up in the Highlands. And this is a failed street. This is one of the streets that we would be reconstructing. You can see it's essentially falling apart. The, the...
Yeah.
...potholing is getting to the point where the asphalt's cracking out. That has to be dug out, and that's an expensive proposition. So how do we fund roads, or what, what are some strategies? To reach what is a best management practice level, or a PCI of 84, we would need to infuse about $7.3 billion a year in additional revenue into the statewide system. Excuse me, not additional revenue, total revenue. Right now, there's about, I want to say, a million six, 1.6 billion being spent statewide on roadway transportation maintenance. So you can tell that's about increasing our levels four to five times. If we were to maintain the current statewide PCI, we would need to expend about $3.3 billion per year statewide. And as you can see, under the current funding levels, if we continue doing what we're doing, we're going to see a continuous decline of our PCIs for the next 10 years. And again, this, these are the streets that we drive to work on, that we get goods to the stores on. These are, these are very important. And the reason why we need that new funding is because if we don't, we're gonna see failed streets statewide go from 6 percent to 25 over the next 10 years. So that's, that's pretty substantial. And we're right at that teetering point where we're ready to fall off the, fall off the table and, and become really in deep trouble. But it's not just the roads, and it's not just bridges. It's the rest of the system. We talked this morning about sidewalks. They're an added part of the roadway system. We have an extensive storm drain system. We have streetlights. We have inlets. We've got road signs. There are street trees. That unfortunate car was near one that didn't survive. So there's a lot to do. These are some examples of some of the failures. That sidewalk's my favorite one. You've got, there's a street tree behind that. The roots kick up the sidewalk. And so there's a lot of maintenance that goes into not just the paved section, but also the infrastructure surrounding it. If you look statewide at all these things, the pavements, the bridges, and the sidewalks and all that, you're looking at roughly a $78 billion shortfall over the next 10 years. So we're really in a critical situation in California. Unfortunately, revenue measures aren't doing very well right now. But there are some ideas about how to raise some additional money. And this shows you some of them. There's new technologies. We're using, we, up at Devil's Slide, we used a microseal, which is a new, something new that we had never done. But it's a, it's a little bit thicker than a slurry seal. It gives you a, a pretty good wearing surface, and it's quite a bit less expensive. But here's some ideas on how we might be able to raise some additional revenue. I think the most interesting one is the mile-based fee, which is beginning to gain some momentum statewide. We have a lot of vehicles now that are getting much greater gas mileage. So the whole idea of developing transportation or transportation revenue tied to gas tax is not a real winner right now, because cars are getting better gas mileage, so they're using less gas. Also, electric vehicles are becoming more and more popular. So there needs to be a different way to pay for transportation. And one of those ways is to pay based upon vehicle miles traveled. Oregon and Washington is, is doing that right now. It's looking at being piloted in California, but that could be the future of transportation funding. So those are, those are some of the ideas that are being discussed statewide. But in terms of the findings of this, we've pretty much been through this. It's not a pretty picture. The, the PCI continues to deteriorate, and we need a lot of additional funding to be able to maintain our current system. And I think certainly, from our perspective, from Public Works' perspective, you know, we look at the road system as a very valuable asset to the county, and we do what we can to try to preserve that system in the condition that is the best we can provide for the dollars that we have. So we're constantly looking at innovation. The chip seal program was a great one. You'll probably be seeing more cape seals, which is a slur, it's actually a chip with a slurry on top. So you get a little bit more of a wearing surface, but it's a little bit less expensive. So we want to make sure that we maintain and invest the system, into the system now, so that we don't get to that failed condition that causes us to, to spend a lot more money than perhaps we, we might need to. And that pretty much concludes the, the update on the road system. I'd be happy to answer any questions we have. You might have. I'm sorry.
President Pine, I just wanted to make a comment. Jim and I were at the CSAC convention, and Caltrans did a presentation on the proposed 0.5 cent per mile. They're gonna do a pilot program in 2017. Don't know why it's taking so, but, and there'll be 600 cars that will be put with GPS in their car, and they'll do it for about nine months to 12 months, and then see how many, approximately how many miles were being driven, what they thought about the system, and begin to introduce it to the public as a, as a way to augment the gas taxes, which, as Jim said, continue to go down and down. And there doesn't seem to be any will in Washington to raise the gas tax at all. We have this to look forward to.
Yes, thank you.
Jimmy, you probably mentioned, but in the county unincorporated, what is our rating again?
We're at 66.
In the, in the state?
Oh, wait, excuse me. We're at 68, I'm sorry.
Okay.
PCI of 68.
In the state averages?
State average is 66, so we're a little better.
We have a lot of rural roads, that's for sure.
We do. And in fact, what, what our strategy has been, there's a lot of mileage on the coast side. We put a lot of, of our chip seal program on the coast side, where there's not a lot of residential property. Some of the feedback we get on chip seals is that it's not very good in residential areas, because kids can't roller skate if you fall off your bike. It, it's a little bit rough, that, that surface. But it does provide, on these rural roads, a good wearing surface. And if you look at the history of the roads in San Mateo County, particularly west of Skyline, those were all a bunch of logging roads, and there really is no structural section. They've been rocked and oiled for 100 years now. And you've got layers of rock and oil. So it's basically this buildup of, of chip seals. So we're gonna continue to put chips on there, and keep those roads maintained.
Through the chair. We do get complaints about the chip seals, though, from bicyclists.
Yes.
Yeah, because when you fall, it's kind of like a cheese grater. It's really rough. And same for motorcycles as well. But, you know, I, I think there's just limited funding. It's just, that's all we can do. And bicyclists don't contribute anything to roads.
Right.
So do you need a motion for us to support the findings and items A and B?
Yes.
That one you're looking for. I'll move that.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Porter. So item 10's the county manager concerning the agenda administrator contract.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, we have a new agenda administrator who I would like to introduce publicly to the board today. That's Janay Oliver. Janay's first day was yesterday. I hope today's not her last day, given the board meeting today, but we can assure that they all won't be like this. In order to facilitate Janay's training, we think it's appropriate to, to bring Ms. Romero back for a brief period of time to facilitate that. And inasmuch as the retirement period for Becky has been less than 180 days, it's necessary for you to pass this resolution of necessity.
Okay, unless there's any comment or questions, we can entertain a motion here.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. We have our county manager report, number 11.
Mr. President, members of the board, in the interest of the hour, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Seems like that is your typical report.
It seems like that's been the way the meeting's been.
So we will wrap up with board member reports. Want to start, Mr. Solikum?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question, actually, for the county manager. I heard a weather report that talked about five to six or seven inches of rain in the next few days. I'm not sure if I heard that right.
That's correct.
But, but I'm curious about San Francisco Creek, North Pharoahs, East Palo Alto, San Bruno, and what the county may be doing in that regard.
The, the Office of Emergency Services has been pulling together various operating departments, most notably Public Works, that is preparing contingency, or implementing contingency plans for those creeks that are likely to, to flood if this occurrence appears as, as significant as the forecasters indicate. Stockpiling sand for sandbags and sandbags, and, and stationing crews out in the various locations. Sheriff, obviously, is, is also ensuring that we have adequate emergency personnel in particularly the coast side, where it's often difficult to get to if trees go down. So we are certainly anticipating this storm event, and we'll have the appropriate operational crews ready. We've also notified employees that in the event of a serious emergency, that they should be preparing to remain at work, or be prepared to call back at work, and make sure their families are provisioned accordingly.
John, I just want to mention, to follow up on that, I had gotten an email today from a gentleman from Broadmoor, and I guess this last rain, they really had some significant issues up there with one of those manholes blowing open, and the water's very high, and they weren't getting emergency crews very quickly. I just wonder if we can make sure that, well, I see Captain Wees here, so I may, straight to, straight to you, make sure that in Broadmoor, up in the north county, has sufficient help up there. And, you know, I assume we'll have a Public Works crew, because they always have flooding there. Unfortunately, we know that's a really bad area. But this one sounded particularly, considering it was raining, but not that bad compared to what we may get. So I just want to make sure. And I sent that email to Jim, too. I was gonna mention it to him. But I also have a quick journal memory of Peg Callahan. She was, went to the University of Detroit and got her BA in music. She moved to California, where she met Bill Callahan, and they got married in, in 1960. They moved to Avalon Drive in Daly City. She had three boys, Bill, Mike, and Tim. She got tired of the fog, I'm surprised at that, and moved to Sonoma. But for 30 years, she taught music in second grade at Los Cerritos Elementary School in South San Francisco. Before moving north, she gave a lot of time to St. Andrew's Catholic Church. She hosted many church gatherings, fed the parish with their legendary spaghetti dinners, entertained with their singing groups and choirs, and she led the St. Andrew's Teen Club, creating a lasting legacy as a friend and mentor to a generation of Daly City teenagers. She will be sorely missed. She was a big part of the Daly City community.
Thank you. I just, just want to comment that I attended the graduation of the citizens, of San Mateo County Citizens Academy, and we had a really good class. I think it was very successful. And two observations. We had a couple of employees take it, which I think we should encourage employees to do that, because you, you know, you learn so much about the, the big picture of the county. And we had some city council members take it as well. And another group we might want to encourage, they're a little more pressed, they're very pressed for time. But the team that put that together, and all the team, all the, all the time that department heads and others put in was very much appreciated. It was a very, very well-received program.
Mr. President, I have to apologize. My staff just handed me something that I meant to have in front of me before, if you don't mind, before we move. This is the season for the Children's Fund, and we support about 3,000 children and teens every year that come from our Child Welfare, Mental Health, Human Service, and Probation Departments, as well as low-income and foster children. It's, the gift drive is one of the largest programs of the Children's Fund, so we're calling on the public and county employees to help us as best they can. We're looking for unwrapped toys in the marked barrels around the county. And you can also go on Amazon. There's a wish list, so you can visit their website and select and purchase a toy for a deserving child. And if you have any questions, feel free to call 802-5152, or childrensfund.sanmateogov, smcgov.org. Thank you.
Well, I've got a couple of unfortunate journal memory. One is Margaret Cassetta. She was the wife of one of my former deputies, Bob Cassetta, and daughter of one of our lieutenants, Bill Moran. I worked for her for a number of years, but she was real active in Elks Club, and she was a volunteer at Sequoia Hospital, did all things Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4-H, Women's, the Peninsula Hills Women's Club, and Redwood City Elks Club as well. The other unfortunate, I have to let you know that Bill Lannan was one of our retired Superior Court judges, died the other day. He was a great guy. He actually started as a probation officer, and then went on to become a Superior Court judge. His wife, Natalie Lannan, there's a, the...
Oh, yeah.
The, what is it, Legal Aid has an award, Natalie Lannan Award, because of our community service. The, the two of them were really heavily involved in community service. Two of their children, one was Lorraine, who was married to one of my lieutenants. And then Mike Lannan was a captain of Fremont Police. It was a great law enforcement family. Bill Lannan and I used to play racquetball, and I once hit him in the head, and I was a sergeant. And I thought, here I am, a sergeant hitting a Superior Court judge in the head playing racquetball. Great guy. The other is, we did, on this last Friday, had an agriculture workshop on the coast side. It was really, the title of it was Water Supply Reliability, and it was for agricultural landowners and operators. And we really did focus on conservation and development, that is, water development, not development per se. It was extremely well-funded, we, or attended. We had 80 people. We had private landowners, Post, Mid Peninsula Open Space District, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, key operators of nurseries, conventional growers, organic growers, ranchers. And a number of statewide experts came to San Mateo County to share their knowledge with us. We had an expert from the University of California Institute for Water Resources, Director for Water Resources for the California Farm Bureau, Director for Trout Unlimited. It was really a, it was, I, I think it was really one of the most fascinating workshops that we've had on the coast side, bringing together operators, as well as organizations like Post, and really, you know, making a commitment to work together on some of these issues about, because we know that there is climate change. We know there's a long-term issue with drought. And somehow, we have to get water, a reliable source of water for our ag producers, to be able to, for long-term sustainability, for to maintain our agricultural heritage. And that concludes my report.
Okay, we, we're prepared to adjourn. Are we reconvening in closed session?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. The board met in closed session to consider the several items that are listed on the agenda. There, the board did take final action on, on one, one pending workers' comp matter. The board, in unanimous vote, approved a workers' comp settlement for Denver Burris in the amount of $140,000. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. We are adjourned.